And we are going to back to order. Uh, this is just continuation, but I will still do a roll call. Council Prince Bay?
Good morning.
Good morning. Counselor Morgan.
Morning.
Good morning, Counselor Chance.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counsel Rutherford.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counsel Clark.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counsel Tang.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counsel Parma.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counsel Paquette.
Dante.
Good morning, Counsel Salvador.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counsel Stevenson.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counsel Elliott.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counsel Wright.
Good morning.
Good morning. Wonderful. So, uh, we were in the process of going through these items. We have, uh, the order of operations today is going to be seven point two unless anything has changed. That's the first item, which is going to be the economic development one. Then we would go to seven point five, which is the growth planning. And if, and only if we are finished those two in time, we would move to advancing safety and security. So, um, what we will do just before you start the presentation, because I imagine presentation is a few slides. I know we have some guests that have just walked in and I'd like to welcome them first. Uh, all right. So, we are joined by the grade six class. Oh, they were, yes, grade six class. This is, they were going to try to join us yesterday, but we were still, we couldn't, didn't work yesterday. So grade six classroom, uh, Mia No School in Ward, Tasta Winniwock, uh, which is represent, uh, and the teacher Kay Boyce. Hello, uh, to our, there you are. Hello. Uh, hello, everyone. Uh, your counselor who has just turned on her screen there, you'll see Counselor Karen Prince Bay is waving to you on the screen. And they are waving back at you, Counsel Prince Bay. You can't see it, but they are waving, I believe me. And, uh, and we're excited to have you. So they, they're on day four now? Three, three, that's right. Uh, I know yesterday they got to meet with Counselor Prince Pay, I think, for a conversation. I heard that. Uh, there's been a lot of tours. Have you done, are you doing a mock council at all? You did it yesterday. So who's our mayor from, uh, the mock council? Mayor, did you want to come down to this podium right here? If you do, we'd love to hear what you talked about. So yeah, thank you for using three points of contact, using those handles. That's good. They yell at me every time because I once ran and fell and it, uh, I gave everyone a heart attack as I managed to somehow not hit my head against the wall right there. Uh, it was very good. Um, tell us who you're, what's your name? Hello.
Hi, my name is Zainab.
What was it?
Zainab.
Zainab.
Zainab, Zainab, thank you for being here. And, uh, Mayor Zainab, what did you discuss in your mock council meeting?
Should e-scooters be allowed on sidewalks?
Should e-scooters be allowed on sidewalks? And what did you decide?
Defeated.
You defeated it. Ah, what was the vote? Do you remember the vote? How close was it?
It was five to seven.
Five to seven.
Ooh, a close one, very close one. Okay. Well, uh, really excited to, to hear that you had that discussion and, uh, that's a tough one. We went through that same debate. We also decided not to go on sidewalks, although a lot of folks still somewhat ride their scooters on sidewalks. They're not supposed to. Please stop doing that, people. Um, uh, that's why we're building active transportation infrastructure, lots of great places. So thank you for being here. Thank you to all of you for joining us today. It's a pleasure to have you all. And now we will move on to the corporate focus area of economic developments and we will start with a presentation.
Thank you very much. Uh, so to, we've covered a lot of ground together and today we're going to shift our focus to economic development. Uh, we know this is a critical area for the future prosperity and financial sustainability. And we've been listening carefully to all of the valuable feedback and direction that council has been providing. We are eager to share the detailed plan with you today, uh, but more importantly, we're here to learn more about your vision. Elevating economic development is, as a core focus area is crucial because of its direct and profound impact on Edmontonians' well-being and the city's financial strength. This is about building a resilient, attractive, affordable, and sustainable city. Focusing on economic, uh, on the, on the economy directly improves the quality of life and opportunities. Job creation, it creates a competitive environment, uh, leading to diverse job, uh, jobs and opportunities across all sectors. Talent and vibrancy, it enhances Edmonton's reputation, making it an attractive destination for talent and enterprise. Economic resilience fost, fostering, um, innovation and diversification, creating a robust local economy able to weather, uh, shifts. Uh, reduced, um, reduced resi, uh, sorry, reduced residential burden, uh, diversifies the tax, the municipal tax base, but also attractively reduces the burden on homeowners. Economic development is a key to the city's long-term, uh, health and capacity. Uh, it creates sustainable revenue, which provides sustainable or sustainable expanding revenue base by increasing non-residential tax assessment values and fiscal capacity investment and securing the financial capacity to invest in vital city services, renewal, and long-term infrastructure projects. Next slide. Growing the, uh, growing Edmonton's economy requires continuous, uh, curiosity and facts. Openness to feedback and perceptions and the courage to take risks. We will encounter challenges, perceptions, and opportunities in our roles. To navigate this dynamic landscape, today's session will cover four key areas. Roles and responsibilities and outcomes, reviewing the strategic, uh, thinking behind the focus area. Economic development fundamentals and understanding the facts, uh, specific to Edmonton's economy, how it works, and how we are performing. Economic growth levers, uh, examining the tools available at municipal level, what businesses need to grow, and the mechanisms of financing, like who pays. And then Edmonton's strategy, a dedicated focus on the economic action plan and its refresh. Successful economic development requires a deep collaborative partnership between council and administration with a distinct, but unified with distinct, but unified rules essential to achieving our growth goals. Council operates from a governance perspective, focused on the strategic direction, sets the economic development strategy, or like the economic action plan and policy framework. Ensures all investments are growth catalyzing and strategically aligned, provides oversight and accountability for economic outcomes. Focuses on expanding non-residential assessment base to secure the city's financial future. Administration takes the operational perspective, focusing on the execution, executes, uh, executing on economic development programs and initiatives, actively supporting businesses to start, operate, and grow. Manages the city's place brand and investment readiness, implements necessary infrastructure and processes. This dual effort is fundamentally aimed at promoting, uh, the city as a premier place to invest, work, and live. Enabling business growth and job creation, coordinating infrastructure and investment to strategically strengthen the city's financial sustainability and tax-based growth. Economic development is fun, uh, foundational in achieving our broader vision, directly supporting our goals and growth planning, financial sustainability, and service delivery and safety and security. We are proposing two core outcomes and seek council's input to ensure that they capture the strategic intent at a governance level. One, city programs are strong, uh, uh, sorry, city programs, a strong place brand and infrastructure catalyze business investment and job creation. And this outcome captures the entire environment necessary to, for economic prosperity, ensuring business can easily start, operate, and grow. Uh, and this objective integrates the business friendly and focusing, uh, business friendly and focusing on employment growth. Uh, critically, it is, uh, emphasizing the, a strong place brand, which is fundamental in attracting investment, retaining employees, and drawing skilled workers. And the second is real growth, uh, real growth of non-essential tax assessment base. This outcome is focused directly on fiscal health, uh, strengthening the city's financial foundation by actively growing the non-residential tax base. Why it's separate, you know, through strategic discussions, the non-residential, um, uh, assessment base is identified as a critical metric and lever across all focus areas. Giving it a distinct outcome ensures it maintains the necessary visibility and strategic importance. We believe these two proposed outcomes encapsulate, encapsulate, uh, a strong strategic direction and welcome your input. I'll turn it over to Kim and to Alyssa to go through the rest of the presentation. And Jennifer, sorry.
Good morning. Uh, joined here with, by Alyssa La Liberty, branch manager of Economic Investment Services, and Jennifer Badry, our interim chief communication officer. Next we'll cover economic development fundamentals, uh, to Edmonton's economy. What are the facts? How does it work? And how are we doing? Next slide. Economic development is city building directly leading to improved living standards, job creation, increased tax revenue, and a resilient and diversified economy. While Edmonton is experiencing high population growth, over a hundred thousand people, and is expected to lead the country in real GDP from 2025 to 2028, we face significant challenges that necessitate prioritizing the economy. Edmonton is experiencing high unemployment at eight point seven percent, the highest in the province. This is significant because historic studies suggest that a one percent increase in the unemployment rate is associated with an increase in property crime typically between one percent and two point four percent. Edmonton also has a declining non-residential tax base. Over the last five years, Edmonton has experienced a three percent decline in non-residential assessment value. Our non-residential share of the total tax levy has dropped to forty four point seven percent in 2025, down from fifty one point three percent in twenty, two thousand and five. Downtown has also seen a decline. The proportion of the city tax base derived from downtown has sharply decreased from a high point of ten percent in 2010 to five point two percent in 2025. Given that Edmonton is the only metro downtown in the region, this also has a negative impact on attracting investment into the overall, the region overall. Next slide. A key path to growing city revenues is investing in economic development to ensure your community's businesses are successful. This is a simplified overview of how economic development generally works and is a good baseline to explain why I, all levels of government invest in economic development. Everyone in this room is an economic developer and part of the Edmonton's economic ecosystem. Economic developers provide support to businesses to create an environment where they can be successful. This includes defining economic development vision and strategy, problem solving, removing barriers, and navigating the economic development and city building system. Site development, connection to resources and grants, community and infrastructure revitalization, event attraction and execution. Marketing and branding, Edmonton is a great place to invest and do business, and advocacy to other levels of government. Businesses also have a role in operating their businesses. Successful businesses provide jobs and income jobs and income to people in Edmonton and the region. They bolster the city's reputation as a great place to live and do business. Many provide non-residential tax revenue directly through property taxes or indirectly through lease arrangements. In Edmonton, we have over 39,000 businesses playing this role, with over 95% of these businesses categorized as small, meaning less than 100 employees. To put this in context, the average number of employees in an Edmonton business is 19. Tax revenues from successful businesses then go to directly support community assets. As you may know, businesses do the heavy lifting when it comes to our tax revenues. The growth in our communities means we need more businesses to share the load. And the more businesses we have sharing the load, the more we have for community assets like parks and recreation facilities, roads and infrastructure, public safety, affordable housing, and public transit. But this isn't just a revenue exercise. Economic development can also reduce pressure on our social services. Employment and environmental, social, and governance efforts from our business community also make a difference in individuals not needing to rely as heavily on social services. When Edmonton's business community is called upon to support charitable fundraising, kids' sports, youth programming, military families, and so much more, they answer that call without hesitation. I'm sure you can think of some examples from your own neighborhoods where you've seen this happen. I'm not suggesting that economic development is the solution to our complex social issues, but it can play a significant role. The city of Edmonton is not alone in economic development. Economic development is a team sport. It happens in an ecosystem, meaning the environment is constantly changing and impacting outcomes. This is one of the reasons it is difficult to map and why it can be a challenge to understand roles and responsibilities because of its constant evolution. Driving economic growth requires diverse partners to work to achieve shared economic goals. This collaboration involves various entities, including government, businesses, community organizations, private sector, economic development agencies, post-secondary institutes, business improvement areas, and individuals all working in concert. Economic development is complex and does not happen in isolation, is not controlled by one entity or one action, and we get better results when we work together. We need our partners, economic development organization, and other orders of government, Edmonton businesses and entrepreneurs to work together to build the vibrant and sustainable economy we all want to see. I thank our partners for their support on this work to date, and am encouraged by the shared commitment to move forward in collaboration. In terms of the city of Edmonton's role in the economic ecosystem, we have adopted a coordinated role of our economic strategy, the economic action plan, and a decentralized role for strategy implementation. This means coordinating of the economic action plan is led from city administration, and the 24 actions within the economic action plan are decentralized amongst city of Edmonton branches and our economic development agencies. The 24 actions are then further supported by those partners in Edmonton's economic ecosystem. And there are additional economic actions not shown in the plan that are undertaken by those in the ecosystem that also have a positive impact on Edmonton's economy. City council plays a significant role as governor, shareholder, or funder with economic agencies. More specifically, city administration is responsible for business retention and expansion of businesses looking to start, relocate, operate, and grow in Edmonton. Council is the governor of economic development strategy and improves capital and operating budget while city administration implements that municipal direction. Explore Edmonton is responsible for tourism, visitor economy, and venues. It is quite common to have a tourism destination agency at the municipal level as they are eligible to apply for grants that a municipality is not eligible for. This helps to leverage municipal dollars to secure other funding sources. What's unique about Explore Edmonton is that they also operate Edmonton's conference venues, which is less common in other cities. Edmonton is the sole shareholder and provides the operational funding for this organization. Edmonton Unlimited is Edmonton's innovation agency, helping to provide innovation leadership, fundraising, marketing, and monitoring, and support for startups and scale-ups. Edmonton is the sole shareholder and provides the operational funding for this organization as well. Edmonton Global is responsible for foreign direct investment and trade. An FDI agency is also more common in municipalities as they allow for a municipality to compete for foreign capital, resonate better with a foreign investor, and foreign travel is more efficient. Edmonton is one of several regional municipal shareholders and provides approximately 66% of the operational funding for Edmonton Global. Edmonton Screen is the agency that supports creators in the film, television, and video game sectors in Edmonton looking to create their next project locally. The city is the main funder through an operational grant. This work is important as it is an indirect way to advertise Edmonton and create interest for those who want to live, work, visit, or invest here. Health Cities finds innovative solutions to make healthcare better for people, easier for providers, and more effective for communities. Located in Edmonton and supported with an operational grant, Health Cities provides better health comes across Canada. Although no operational funding from the city of Edmonton is provided, council also plays a governor role with Edmonton's 13 business improvement areas. Under the Municipal Government Act, council is responsible for approving business improvement area establishment, expansion, board appointment, and board-supported budgets. An agency review of economic development agencies on this slide excluding Health Cities is under review and for return to council in 2026. If we take a look deeper, Edmonton's economic profile is a mix of established strengths and ongoing challenges, both of which impact Edmonton's economic growth. These are the things that make up Edmonton's economic DNA and what differentiates Edmonton from other cities. At a macro level, these are the economic indicators that will help to increase investment, jobs, and growth in Edmonton's non-residential tax base. Edmonton has also won awards and received high ranking globally in areas like permitting, events, tourism, downtown economic actions, the Business Census, and much more. Although we won't go through the drivers and challenges, rankings, and awards in detail today, more information is available on the city's website. One of the most powerful tools Edmonton has to inform city business investment decisions is the Edmonton Business Census. Launched in 2023, the Edmonton Business Census is designed to help address gaps in available business and employment information. This data does not exist through any other sources. It's made in Edmonton for Edmonton and is available for free publicly on our website. This tool is used to measure outcomes of city plan and the economic action plan. It also recently won a 2025 Minister's Award. There are many ways this data is being used, and I'd like to touch on a few concrete examples, use cases that illustrate how data is making a difference in informing Edmonton's business decisions. When the US began threatening tariffs, the city needed to understand how this was going to impact Edmonton's businesses. We use the Business Census data to confirm that Edmonton is mostly a service-based rather than a goods-producing economy. This is important because generally speaking, goods are impacted more from tariffs, while services are impacted more by counter tariffs. We also use Census data to confirm 12% of Edmonton's businesses' export, and those that do export have more staff. This helped explain why tariff impacts in Edmonton were lesser more delayed than those being experienced by other good-producing cities. City Centre Mall is currently in receivership, and many Edmonton's ecosystem are looking for ways to propose a new approach. As part of regular business, the city is interacting with groups that are using the Business Census data, specifically in Ward-O'Dea Men, to assess the market, business saturation, and demand that will inform proposals for City Centre Mall. There are many more uses for this data that can be discovered through the Business Census dashboard, and the 2025 results are coming early in 2026. Now that we have a common understanding of Edmonton's economic fundamentals, we will move to look at economic growth. What levers are available at the municipal level? What do businesses need to grow? And who pays?
Thank you, Kim. Every municipal economy is unique, requiring governments to tailor their strategies to their community needs and local competitive advantage. The levers on this slide are the mechanisms municipalities typically use, and Edmonton is using or has used all of these to some degree. I am only going to touch on a few examples for each lever, and many of these you will hear about throughout this presentation. Vision, strategies, and engagement reflect the vision for the future state of the economy and priorities for how to get there. Edmonton's key economic strategies include the economic action plan, downtown action plan, and industrial investment action plan. Financial and fiscal levers include incentives, grants, tax, and procurement tools. The city offers incentives for brownfield redevelopment, plus grants like corner store program to help businesses make property improvements, or the Edmonton Edge Fund to help businesses start and grow. The city's community revitalization levy program in Belvedere, the quarters, and downtown are tax financing tools. CRLs help Edmonton revitalize areas where redevelopment might otherwise, not, might not otherwise take place. Regulatory and planning levers, including zoning, land use planning, and streamlining approvals. This includes things like city plan implementation, zoning bylaw renewal, and district planning, which play a major role in our economy. The city is streamlining approvals by reducing red tape and fast-tracking development and permit applications. Edmonton continues to do significant work in this space and is currently the top Canadian city for new developments due to its leading approval process, quick timelines, and low charges, according to a review by the Canadian Home Builders Association. Programs and infrastructure include investment and economic development programs and infrastructure. Edmonton offers a suite of business-friendly supports, online, one-on-one, and through workshop and grants, and invests in physical infrastructure like transportation and digital networks. Partnerships include working with key economic agencies and local groups. As mentioned previously, the city formally funds Edmonton Global, Explore Edmonton, Edmonton Unlimited, Edmonton Screen, and Health Cities. We also work closely with our 13 BIAs with the wider, and the wider business and economic community. One way the city can help Edmonton's businesses grow is by creating a business-friendly environment. What does that really mean to a business? These are the needs that we hear regularly through our business-friendly team and from businesses across all city services. Businesses need a clear regulatory environment. This means things like reviewing our zoning bylaw and offering streamlined permitting. They need affordable and skilled labor, a top priority for investors. This is supported by our eight post-secondary institutions and the availability of affordable housing. Businesses require reliable information to make decisions such as economic forecasting and access to open data. Accessible public transit for employees and an efficient transportation network for logistics are essential. This is a competitive advantage supported by projects like the Yellowhead Trail Freeway and efficient snow clearing. Businesses need safe communities. This is the number one issue raised recently by Edmonton businesses. This requires responsive emergency services and well-enforced bylaws. And finally, they need access to capital through grant programs and low fees, and a positive city reputation, which is boosted by initiatives like our Y Edmonton branding. Investing in business is a risk. The quicker we can have businesses take that risk, the quicker we will see economic benefit, and the quicker we will see return to the city's economy.
One area Edmonton has an opportunity to actively influence economic growth is through place brand and place-making. This is an engagement lever mentioned previously when discussing municipal economic levers. I'll start with sharing our definition of place brand. Place branding is the strategic articulation of who we are as a city, and I mean that as a little c, not a big corporate c, and what is our collective identity and our reputation. This is articulated by years of research and engagement. It's never stagnant, forever evolving as the city grows, changes shape, and welcomes more people from all walks of life. Place-making, on the other hand, personifies Edmonton in a way that attracts investment, skilled talent, and signature events. The research tells us that there continues to be a strong civic pride, another important component of successfully telling our collective story. Whether that's in the nostalgic city of champions, embracing winter city, or taking pride as festival city, we are all those things and more. Next slide, please. And now that we've established how the city defines and leverages place brand and place-making, along with sharing our intentions around collaborating with partners on a substantial framework, I want to get into why place brand has an important place specifically in economic development. While place brand and place-making can include catchy taglines and inspiring campaigns, done well, it's heavily rooted in data and evidence. Current research tells us that Edmonton isn't well-known on the international stage, so what do we do with that? Well, first, we assess our highest potential return on investment from a place brand perspective by examining a cross-section of strategies from our tourism partners to organic opportunities and leaning into our own industrial action plan and economic action plan's six high-growth sectors to drive industrial investment and economic diversity. And we use that to assess which markets we want to target, where the crossovers are, whether that's from that investment perspective or attractions. In order to complete the first step to any successful place brand strategy, it's targeted awareness, because we need people to know who we are. And if you're already here, what makes you feel good about being here and makes you want to scale up? That enables the city to have an informed place brand and place-making conversations with the many important partners that we have to reactivate, coordinate, and convene a strong place brand framework. I just want to be clear, though, that the goal isn't for the city to sweep in with a catchy tagline or expensive campaign. Rather, the framework we are developing will be focused on the strengths and stories that our partners already bring to the table, and cultivates an ecosystem that maintains and enhances momentum around our collective story. Through rich storytelling, we want to leave a lasting impression about why you want to invest here, live here, play here, and learn here. Along the bottom of the slide, you'll see three boxes. And while there might not be an immediate direct correlation between any one campaign or tagline, or any one investment to move to our city, the collective and cumulative effort and momentum shows up in different ways over time. In fact, several studies show that a strong place brand has a correlation to economic growth and eventually could contribute to financial sustainability. And that's why economic development is a cornerstone of Edmonton's place brand. How he presents the city to investors, businesses, and talent plays a vital role in defining Edmonton's future as a vibrant center of opportunity and growth. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Kim.
Another significant focus for economic growth is downtown. In a business context, the downtown would be considered Edmonton's geographic financial engine. Because of any geographic area in Edmonton, it has the highest population of over 14,000 residents and 1,632 businesses. It also contributes 5.2% of the city's tax base from less than 1% of our land. Investing in our downtown is a good bet. Downtown properties typically yield more tax revenue by a factor of 10 to 30 times per acre than suburban developments. The valuation of our buildings downtown has decreased, which is a major factor when looking at the declining contribution to the city's non-residential tax base. Just like we have seen a large decrease in value, we have also, we also have the ability to reverse this trend at scale. And our work downtown is being recognized. Economic Developers Alberta awarded the city of Edmonton first place in the Economic Development Renewal Project category for the Entertainment District. This is the second year in a row Edmonton has taken first place in this category. Although there are major opportunities downtown, significant issues such as homelessness, social disorder and safety, undeveloped land, declining asset values, and low office and hotel vacancy rates need to also be addressed systematically to remove barriers for investment and growth. Everyone should feel secure and confident to walk down city streets, ride public transit, or visit downtown. Edmonton's downtown core and transit system safety plan outlines tangible action on several components of community safety, and the blueprint for violence prevention is our long-term plan to reduce and stop violence before it starts. Implementing these plans alongside the downtown action plan will support creating safer places and spaces downtown, which is important to changing perceptions and improving vibrancy. Increasing the residential population is essential for building a strong downtown and one of the four downtown action plan goals. Leveraging funding opportunities like the CRL and Infill Infrastructure Fund will help drive housing development that strengthens growth and creates a more dynamic and livable downtown. Given the pandemic has heavily impacted downtown since the last federal census was completed in 2021, I'm providing our best estimate of downtown's current population. The 2021 federal census population for downtown was 12,000 residents in 7,870 occupied units, or approximately 1.5 residents per unit. Currently under construction units could add approximately 550 more residents by the end of 2027, and propose units and other 4,000 residents in future years. This does not include new projects, which is difficult to predict. Although not guaranteed, the completion and absorption of these planned units would grow downtown's population to approximately 20,000. New student housing in downtown Edmonton is also on the horizon as a result of the $15 million downtown student housing incentive. The program was co-created with students, post-secundaries, and the development community, approved by council, and applications were closed for this program on September 30. Administration is currently working on funding agreements with successful applicants, and announcements are expected once those agreements are in place. These numbers do not include the Village at Ice district, which is not technically in the downtown boundary, and we also expect this to have a positive impact on our downtown. Industrial development is another important part of our economy, fiscal sustainability and growth. If downtown is economics' geographic financial engine, industrial is Edmonton's land-use financial engine. Industrial development yields high returns in terms of higher taxes assessment than any other use class. When we look at the city's largest tax When we look at the city's largest tax assessment in industrial versus commercial, you'll see that the industrial land earns more per hectare. Industrial development also represents seventeen percent and the largest share of the non-residential tax base in Edmonton. This means that when we are successful in industrial development growth through industrial business expansions or new development and investment, we also see large returns as a city that creates both direct and indirect economic benefits. On average, Edmonton industrial tax assessment has grown by almost a hundred and seventy-one million dollars per year over the last ten-plus years. And in twenty twenty-four alone, total industrial construction in Edmonton increased almost twenty percent. Although this is positive growth, as mentioned previously, we know this is not enough to meet the needs of our growing population. Industrial development projects typically take three to over five years from the time final investment decisions are announced to when the business is fully operational and earning the city tax revenue. This is because industrial development projects are generally high-value, meaning they require large amounts of capital investment. They're unique, where no other project is identical. This makes it challenging to create economies of scale and the ability to replicate and create efficiencies like is possible with other development types. Projects are complex, requiring plans and zoning, infrastructure planning, and delivery and investment attraction to work together to make these projects feasible. Edmonton also experiences challenges with industrial development. Only two percent of Edmonton's vacant land inventory is shovel-ready. Generally speaking, industrial developers seek land that is already serviced as a mechanism to shorten their timelines, reduce carrying costs, and increase their earnings sooner. Most of Edmonton's easy-to-develop land has been absorbed, meaning our available land today is not as attractive as other options that would have been available years prior. Tax competitiveness with regional municipalities presents a challenge for Edmonton for businesses that are particularly tax-sensitive or whose businesses are not geographically or operationally tied to a big city like Edmonton. Although Edmonton still attracts the largest total amount of investment to the city than any other surrounding municipality, the investment per capita in Edmonton is lower than many of our regional counterparts. This is a challenge to manage, and there are many examples of projects, and there are also many examples of projects where investment decisions are made that are not driven by taxes. Land, proximity to amenities and transportation corridors, supply chain clusters, available labor, and many more factors provide value and helps explain why Edmonton is still seeing large investment coming to Edmonton despite tax competitiveness. My point is that not all investment decisions are solely based on taxes and it's important to fully understand what is needed to get to yes quicker and more often for industrial development in Edmonton. We will be providing a more detailed update to council in twenty twenty-six on the progress we've made on the Industrial Investment Action Plan since last June, as well as bringing forward recommendations for increasing service land in Edmonton and options for increasing industrial growth. Growth in non-residential tax revenues is largely driven by the types of tax assessment by use class. We've talked about how industrial development yields higher return, higher returns than any other use class, but not all non-residential land is industrial and not all non-residential land earns high tax returns for the city. This slide shows a basic framework to show the property types that generally earn low returns and those that have higher returns. This is particularly important to consider during land use and investment decisions. Should serviced industrial land be rezoned for a school or park, or vice versa? Should institutional investment attraction be a priority? What creates the largest direct and indirect economic impact for the city? Properties that have lower earnings tend to be land-intensive and do not include a lot of buildings. This type of land is less competitive in Edmonton as the, less competitive in Edmonton as in the region as the region has a greater supply of this serviced land with lower mill rates. This helps to explain the number of RV storage and lay-down yards being established in the region, which is really important for a regional economy. Properties that have higher earnings are building-intensive with many structures that are custom-built to the operations of the business. These operations tend to also be higher places of employment. Hotels and office buildings generally have higher assessment values when they have higher occupancy rates. This is why attraction of businesses to offices and visitors to hotels are important because they help to drive up occupancy rates, improve assessment values, and should also increase city revenues. One caveat to mention on office buildings. High tax would definitely come from fully utilized triple-A class offices, but the soft office demand means they're just not being built at this time. Economic development is funded by a combination of public and private sources with the specific mix varying significantly depending on the project, the location, and the economic climate. Government bodies at various levels use tax revenues and other public funds to support economic development initiatives. The federal government provides grants, loans, and subsidies for large-scale projects like infrastructure improvements or industry-specific research. The provincial government offers incentives to attract businesses, funds workforce training programs, and supports regional development strategies. Municipal governments use local taxes to invest in community projects, maintain local infrastructure, and provide incentives like property tax abatements or zoning variances. Private investment is also a critical driver of economic growth. Businesses invest their own capital in new facilities, equipment, research, and development and hiring new employees. They are often incentivized by the potential for profit and government programs. Private investors and venture capitalists provides capital to new or expanding businesses with high-growth potential, seeking a return on their investment. Nonprofit organizations and foundations often focus on specific community development goals such as affordable housing, job training, or supporting local small businesses using grants and donations. Many economic development projects involve rewards, involve partnerships where rewards and funding are shared between government agencies and private companies to achieve shared goals. Ultimately, the goal of economic development is to improve the standard of living and economic health of a community with the costs distributed among various partners who all stand to benefit from a stronger economy. I'll now pass it back to Kim.
We want to take a few moments to highlight the important work from our Integrated Infrastructure Services Department that guides growth. We want to use our growth investments in two key ways. To catalyze further investments and meet the demands of growth, simply, we have growth makers and growth takers. We need to be deliberate on using our dollars to be, meet both demands. To support council, we are identifying opportunities where infrastructure investments serve as a catalyst for broader economic growth, establishing criteria to guide the prioritization of capital planning and growth-related investments. Additionally, the project delivery model evaluation process prioritizes value for money, manages effective risk allocation between the city and industry, enables innovation, opportunities early on in the project lifecycle, and optimizes our infrastructure design and construction with input from operations and maintenance to optimize lifecycle cost. Guided by principles ensuring public interest, transparent, private sector engagement, demonstrated value, and strong government governance, it seeks to balance risk, rewards, and accountability to achieve cost, schedule, and quality certainty. Next, through continual review of assets, the city has a plan to manage its infrastructure assets in order to manage growth, encourage economic development, and protect public safety. Lastly, in alignment with the city plan, the mobility system remains efficient, resilient, and multimodal, and we will continue to ensure that each network is seamlessly integrated to support a cohesive and accessible mobility framework across Edmonton. We've talked about Edmonton's economic fundamentals and economic growth. Now we'll turn our attention to Edmonton's economic development strategy, the Economic Action Plan, and what is on the horizon for council decision related to economic development. The Economic Action Plan was launched in twenty twenty-one and it's Edmonton's current ten-year economic development plan. It is intended to build a vibrant, inclusive, and sustainable economy. The Economic Action Plan was developed during the pandemic. The economy was shaken by COVID nineteen and business owners were facing unprecedented uncertainty. Despite this, the focus of the plan was not on the pandemic. Rather, it remained future-focused and intended to grow the economy. The city plan targets the creation of five hundred and twenty thousand new jobs in the next forty years. This is where the Economic Action Plan comes in. At a high level, we are estimating that a hundred and twenty-one thousand jobs are required in Edmonton in the next ten years to support population growth forecasted by the city plan. To achieve this, the Economic Action Plan identifies five principles and twenty-four actions to guide the economic development activities of the city and its partners. The aspirational outcome of the plan is to create the environment in which inclusive and equitable job creation and economic diversification can happen. The plan is on track to achieve its ten-year goals. There is an opportunity to leverage this momentum while also making improvements. Of the twenty-four actions outlined, twelve are considered complete as of work to date has achieved what they intended to accomplish. Complete does not mean work stops or resources are redeployed. Instead, much of this work is now incorporated into everyday work and will remain a continuous improvement effort. These accomplishments have laid the foundation and prepared to help us tackle what's next. The plan is meant to be evergreen, and so responding to a changing environment and thus, changing course in some ways is very much intentional. This May, Edmonton held its first economic development symposium to share the results of the first annual report. What I know for sure is that our ecosystem is eager to work together and Edmonton has what the world needs. Next slide. The Economic Development Symposium was the kickstart to reflect on our collective economic action plan accomplishments and also look towards the future. The annual report summarizes key themes from the symposium discussion. These discussion themes were advanced to engagement sessions with the organizations listed on this slide that welcome to further discussion with the team. These organizations worked with us to set up a tailored session with their membership. This allowed us to hear a broader set of voices and also have themes generated unique to each organization. What you see on this slide are the themes listed in order of what was heard the most at number one to the least often, number eight. These themes are a clear indication of what our ecosystem is looking for to strengthen Edmonton's economy. I'll touch on the top three today, cohesive brands and storytelling. There is widespread agreement that Edmonton lacks a clear, consistent, and compelling brand identity. Additionally, collaborators have expressed a desire to be able to sing from the same song sheet. Collaborators call for a unified brand to be developed through a community-led effort. This brand will provide direction to storytelling and marketing efforts, balancing out negative rhetoric with positive stories about extraordinary things that are taking place in Edmonton and improve local and outsider perceptions of Edmonton. Collaborators recommend that the city develop better connection with the business community, particularly with large businesses, and share local success stories. Collaborators referenced Calgary as an example of a jurisdiction that regularly reaches out to business leaders to improve retention as well as to create local champions that influence investment decisions of other businesses. Main Street infrastructure, including maintenance, beautification, and accessibility. We heard that collaborators stress that downtown and Main Streets should look investment-ready every day. Collaborators noted that cleanliness, crumbling infrastructure, and poor winter accessibility deter new investment or reinvestment from the community. Investors need to be able to see that the city is investing in the community. We'd like to thank everyone who has invested in their time thus far to share insights. We are incredibly thankful for this perspective to help us build a stronger economy in Edmonton. So what does this all mean? How do we make sense of it and what do we do about it? All of this context is being considered to shape the next iteration of, or a refresh of, the Economic Action Plan that is planned to return to council for decision in Q two of twenty twenty-six. Based on Edmonton's economic strategy momentum to date, strategic advice from city leadership, assessment of Edmonton's economic drivers and growth, our fiscal realities, and feedback from the many partners and staff experts, common action areas are beginning to emerge in Edmonton's economic development landscape. These areas focus on enabling a strong business environment, marketing the Edmonton Advantage, and driving investment. Enabling a strong business environment focuses on making Edmonton an easy place to do business. The actions here would help, the actions here would include supporting entrepreneurs and existing businesses, which helps to attract and keep both employers and skilled workers. This generates both direct and indirect economic benefits, including job creation and increased tax revenue. Marketing the Edmonton Advantage is all about promoting Edmonton's unique strengths through place brand. It involves developing and sharing a compelling value proposition to raise awareness of the city's opportunities for business, capital, and talent on a local, regional, and global scale. Driving investment is focused on attracting capital and investing in key catalytic infrastructure. Actively using Edmonton's existing assets such as its land, talent pool, and infrastructure to become a top choice for investment will drive growth in areas such as property value, business expansion, and new businesses and buildings, all having an impact on the non-residential tax revenue and job creation. We believe that there has been positive momentum under Edmonton's Economic Action Plan, including a better understanding of challenges and opportunities, and welcome your guidance and input for what's next. Economic development is a team sport, and we are in this together. We have gathered momentum under the existing Economic Action Plan. Edmonton's economy is being driven from areas of strength, and it's also experiencing challenges that require attention. We have the opportunity to work with our ecosystem to generate improved economic impact under your council governance. We welcome your feedback as well as responses to the questions posed on this slide. And with that, we'll close. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have some guests. I wanted to wait till they finished the presentation. We were close, so. Uh, but I, I imagine they can't be here forever as they're on a tour. We have the grade six class from Gold Bar School uh with teacher Jay Rozak. Is that, is that how we say, say? Yeah, perfect. Your counselor is Counselor Ashley Salvador, who's right there. Very excited to see you, and we're all excited to see you. And so have you, you are doing, you just here in the morning? Morning tour and a mock council maybe? Excellent. Have you done the mock council? No, you're about to. Who's the mayor from this? Mayor, did you want to come down and tell us what you're going to be discussing? We'd love to know what you're, you're, you're going to be discussing. Getting a little guidance there. Excellent. Come on down. Absolutely. Come right up to that microphone and you can tell us your first name.
Tora.
Tora. We, thank you for coming, Mayor Tora. Mayor Tora, what are you going to be debating today?
Uh, we're debating about to upgrade um Gold Bar School's community park.
Oh, upgrading Gold Bar School Community Park. How do you feel about that, Counselor Sal? Do you want to give them any advice on their discussion?
Unfunded service package, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, all right. Good. All right. Well, uh, once you decide what, what to do, please let us know what you decide. And uh, thank you so much for being here and thank you all for being here. It's a pleasure to have you all today. Thank you very much. Wonderful. Well, now, we'll see if there's any questions for our city administration on this report. Uh, this was selected by Counselor Rutherford. Do you have questions, Counselor Rutherford?
Yeah, just a few, just a few quick questions.
Excellent. If anyone else has questions, please go on the board.
Can you pull up the last slide again, just as well? So one of the things that I've been sort of thinking about is we have three, I would say, strategic plans related to economic development. And at times, I think that they contradict one another. I know that when our downtown thrives, the rest of Edmonton thrives. But I've still been deeply uncomfortable with the tax shift from the C R L, for example, to industrial, when we're already trying to compete, at least in the Northwest with St. Albert and Parkland County. So I'm just, and, and, and quite frankly, this is, this is overwhelming when you see it all together. And I don't really actually understand what is, what is our true priority aside from doing a place brand strategy. So is there, uh, like, we've had these kind of disparate conversations. Is there any intention or need to make one cohesive economic development plan? Or do we feel the need for three?
So Counselor Rutherford, I'll start and I'll, I'll ask Alyssa to complement. So the Economic Action Plan is the strategy where the work around the Industrial Investment Action Plan falls out of it. So the overarching plan is the Economic Action Plan. And then we have our downtown work and our industrial work. And those are two action plans that fall out of, as a priority, related to the Economic Action Plan.
Okay. And then what about when other things like, so, again, I go to like the downtown, the downtown action plan talks about increasing property values, and I understand why we need to increase, but then it's also counter to our affordability goals. Cause as property values increase downtown, so does rent. So like, there's just a bunch of con, like, that's the one thing I've been really grappling with, with, with this file, is some of these, like, yes, I want to do all of these things, but there seems to be some contradictions to other contradictions to other work that we are also trying to achieve.
So Counselor Rutherford, I think you are highlighting the complexity that we are all talking about in this space. And you're right, increasing the value of existing buildings is important for our bottom line. We're also increasing our housing supplies. We're bringing more supply online, which should also help with affordability. And so you're right, when you pull on one thread, we're looking at ways to counterbalance other things so that at overall, all of these tactics at the end make us better off than we are today. But you're absolutely right, without taking a look at these things holistically, that is a risk.
Yeah, and I've been, and I do agree with the comment in the report and the research from the survey. Definitely the businesses in the area that I represent, safety has been one of the biggest concerns. But again, now we've changed zoning to allow for shelters in industrial areas that are not meant to function with people walking across the street where there's a semi. So again, a contradiction, right? Like this is, we're just, we're full of contradictions here. So how are we focusing on safety for our industrial areas? In the neck, or is that something that will be provided or discussed further in this next term?
We do have our safety and security presentation that we may get to later today, if not tomorrow, around the priority actions out of that work and we'll share more data on that. But as it relates to safety and security specifically for industrial, it's more broad. It's across the city in its entirety and how we support Edmontonians and focusing on economic development.
But when we talk about an industrial area that does shut down, let's say around five or six, it's more, and it gets dark and then that allows, and people know that, that are maybe going in there to break in. There's a lot of high value stuff. There is a different context to the industrial around safety. So I just, I guess my feedback would be, I do think that that needs to have some consideration of that. And I'm not talking about just the Northwest. I am talking about industrial areas across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tang.
Great. Thank you for the presentation, very thorough and lots of things on the horizon here. Maybe I'll just focus on. I want to ask sort of the pipeline of deals when they come to the city. We have lots of agencies and partners. Can you just like walk me through, let's say, a foreign direct to investment approaches the city or region, right? The first touch point they have is Edmonton Global. And then what happens after that and what happens within the city? And then how do we convert those contacts into real deals? What is our conversion rate?
It's a great, great question, Counselor Tang. I'm going to give just a generalized example of what this would look like. So typically Edmonton Global goes in market, so outside of Edmonton and talks about the Edmonton advantage, what it looks great to come here. So it starts off typically with a geographic geography lesson to know where Canada is, Alberta is and Edmonton is. Once they've got an interested party based on that value, they'll typically come to Edmonton or others in the region asking us for specific details that would support a particular business. So details that Edmonton Global may not have at their fingertips. Things like what do clusters of businesses look like? Where are those locations? Where are assets in the cities? Where are recommended sites to set up these businesses? So the city will provide a proposal back to Edmonton Global and they take that to the business owner or the investor to see if that meets their needs.
Sorry, just, so when they get that information, do they get that from our city staff?
They do.
And we have a business development unit dedicated to that?
We do.
Okay. And is that the same thing as say, I mean, it's kind of sector specific, but is that same thing as say, business friendly? Is that the industrial hub or is that, I can't remember the name of the, like, the dedicated file?
So it's under our Investment Attraction Group and the industrial hub works with those individuals. So we can, when we have an investment that requires additional staff, we can redeploy to where those needs are. So the proposals come from city staff, it goes to the investor and then after that, the investor and once the investor has said they're interested in a particular location in Edmonton, then typically Edmonton Global and the city will work hand in hand to get that investor to yes. Sometimes that includes meeting with counselors or mayor. Sometimes that includes connecting them to others in the ecosystem to see what it's actually like in our permitting system. Once they get to yes, Edmonton Global exits and the city of Edmonton works to take that investment to become operational. So there's, a lot happens up to final investment decision, but a lot of other things happen to get to operations that the city takes over from that point.
Do you have a sense of what the conversion rate is?
Not off the top of my head, Counselor Tang, but we can calculate it.
I will, I would love to know.
Counselor Tang, I would just add that once the handoff happens to the city of Edmonton, we have our client liaison unit, which you were just referencing. That is that single point of contact to help them navigate city processes and permitting.
Do you think we have too many units? We have the client liaison, we have investment traction, we have business friendly, we have industrial hub.
They all have a role and mandate in the ecosystem to support economic development and the way they're organized. There's, you know, seamless interactions. Oh, there's an alarm. Sorry. Seamless interactions with handing off from the attraction to the regulatory environment, which is what the client liaison unit does.
And then do you feel like within that web of network of these units and functions, that's adequately resourced to attract the ambitious goals that we have?
We, you know, when it comes to the permitting team, we're funded using the planning and development business model. So we're able to expand and contract based on demand. As it relates to our teams in our Economic Investment Services, you know, there's always opportunities to scale. But certainly we look to prioritize our work to have the biggest impact based on the resources we have.
I guess some of the feedback I have heard as one of your questions is like, how does it align with what we've heard? Is that we could, you know, beef up our B D C, our Business Development or B D U, Business Development segment to achieve higher conversion rate and to make it more seamless and not just within the city, but with our agency partners.
Yeah, I think.
I'll just reflect that.
When we're landing on priorities with council, I think that will drive, when I talked about earlier yesterday, we talked about, you know, how we organize the city. I think we will land on those priorities and those directions. We can look at how do we reset ourselves in a way that delivers on what council's looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stevenson.
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. You know, something, something that is top of mind for me as we talk about economic growth and development is just how we can have growth without supporting prosperity and sort of that broader social context so that our growth is supporting Edmontonians into you know, high paying jobs, good work for them. So I was just wondering, you know, we've had this conversation before, but when we look at our economic forecast, we currently aren't tracking measures that would indicate some of the social dynamics. So certainly unemployment, I think in the past we've talked about food bank usage, for example, just sort of getting that broader, broader sense. Is that something that is part of the lens that you're taking to economic growth?
We can take that away, Counselor. I think, you know, our chief economist does have a number of items that are tracked in our quarterly report. So we can just reflect back on the measures that we're looking at there.
Great. Well, and I think, you know, looking at the opportunities that we have through our own procurement practices as well. So thinking about how the city is taking a proactive look at how our spending power can support locally. Again, recognizing their trade agreements, but for procurement under seventy five thousand, for example. Apologies, Counselor Stevenson. That's okay. No, it's not. It's just thinking, sort of marrying some of our procurement practices with some of the economic development that we're trying to achieve. So recognizing that for larger contracts, we were bound by agreements or trade agreements. But for some of those smaller pieces, so under seventy five K, just how are we prioritizing spending local, sort of really multiplying our local economic impact?
Yeah, the team is working on some of the bi-local provisions, especially now that there's a mandate federally for that. And then I would also say like we lean into the social sustainable procurement and we can put some of that through the menu options.
Great. Really, really great to hear that. I think another tension that I hear about most often, which I think is, is an evolving one, is sort of that difference between supporting businesses and landlords. A lot of our tools, you know, around property taxes are more property owner focused. But how are we supporting the businesses that are moving into those spaces and providing affordability for them? Any thoughts? I think, I think the list of tools was was really helpful, but just any thoughts that you have around that or where do you see the focus being?
So currently our broadest tool that we offer to all businesses at any size and scale is our business friendly Edmonton Support Staff. So that's one-on-one support, whether it's coaching and support to get them through the city of Edmonton system, whether it's referring to other programs and grants that are available in the Edmonton ecosystem or through other orders of government. And we also have available workshops that we offer again for free online and at a time convenient to businesses, free of charge. So those are things that I think are the most broad sweeping that we have. And then we've got examples of grant programs that we've offered previously, like the Economic Action Plan Grant or the Edmonton Edge Fund that are more targeted towards the business.
Great. Great. Well, and I think also, you know, the list mentioned some of the streamlining. So I know building permits for businesses is an area of focus for your team, Ms. Petron.
It is. Yes, we've launched a process improvement initiative we refer to as taking care of business to support process improvements and innovation.
That's very exciting to hear. You know, we've seen such success with the residential permitting, so very excited to see that coming through. And this has come up before, but I think worth mentioning in the context of economic growth, you know, just how we're supporting businesses during multi-year construction projects. Is that a priority that you're hearing? I'm hearing it from businesses, wondering if that's going to form some of our economic development strategy?
Definitely. We've been hearing this more so from those that interact directly with the city than we do with the thirty nine thousand businesses across the city. So I think it's a cohort of all businesses versus all business. So we just, we hear it from a different subset of overall businesses. And we're taking a look at working, or we are working with those from across Edmonton that are building that infrastructure to look at ways that we could mitigate things that are currently happening as well as how do we incorporate this into our planning better for future years? So understanding we got a current issue, but then how do we plan better for future?
Thank you, Counselor Elliott.
Good morning. Thank you for the presentation. My question is more for an education purpose, like for example, on slide twenty, when we look at the downtown snapshot for people, business and investments currently states that the operating businesses are currently at sixteen hundred and thirty-two. My question for you is that like twenty twenty-three numbers, twenty twenty-four or current year?
Those would be twenty twenty-four numbers based on the twenty twenty-four business census. So twenty twenty-five numbers will be coming early January.
Okay, thank you for that. And by looking at the Economic Action Plan Dashboard, I've seen bankruptcies have increased. So for example, nineteen in twenty twenty-one, thirty in twenty twenty-two, forty-five in twenty twenty-three. My two questions are, do we have the numbers for twenty twenty-four? And is administration, do you become aware of the, I'll say, the common themes that are occurring in the bankruptcies for, because if we look at, if there's a possibility, we can see the common themes of why the bankruptcies are occurring. Is that something that we can focus on or are they too broad in spectrum to say it's too, for that? I'll just go that way.
So we don't collect that information in our current data through the business census or our business retention and expansion survey, but it's something we could. So for example, when we were looking at some things related to tariffs, we were able to add questions related to that. So it's something we could look at in future years.
Okay, thank you. And my final question is, what have we learned in regards to, like, I've heard at the door, I've seen it from my own perspective and that's very subjective and what I'm about to go with the question. What are the common reasons, I say, for the downtown core, for example, that administration has learned that is causing the decline? Is it disorder? Is it taxes? Is it red tape reduction? That's something, are we picked up anything on that or can you educate me on what you've been told, you've been finding out?
I think it's a couple of different factors. The biggest one as of late has been the impacts from the COVID nineteen pandemic. Just it completely disrupted our economy and how businesses operate. I think a second, and then as an impact of that coming out of that has been the actual cost structure. So it is a little bit more expensive to set up and operate a business in a downtown core, but you also have access to more customers. So it is a trade-off. And so again, coming out of a pandemic, it's difficult to start up immediately. So we're starting to see a lot of really positive returns. But this is, has completely restructured the way that our downtown economy has worked. And so looking at all things from, you know, cleanliness on our streets to improving our housing downtown, to infrastructure investments from all orders of government as well as private sector, all of those things have to work together and we need all of them to make an impact. So we're here for the long game.
And Counselor Elliott, I'll just, I'll just mention, this was the importance of us advancing the downtown action plan to have a collective vision in terms of the priority actions we should take to improve downtown.
Okay, thank you for that. And just one final question, because I do have a minute and forty. The, you said there's more expensive to set up for downtown and pardon my ignorance on this, but is that in regards to hypothetically leasing agreements are more expensive in a downtown core versus say north side of the town or south side of the city?
Yes, that's typically accurate. Yes.
Okay, that's my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. This is a bit of a beast of an area. So I, to put it all into a few slides, I commend you on that. Okay, I got a few questions. Can I start? I want to start on branding. And I appreciate like place branding and how hard that is to do and why it's so necessary. Are we kind of saying that that needs to be a bit refined into something that's, you know, a little bit more digestible for someone? Is that where kind of one of the recommendations is?
Thanks, Counselor Clark. Yeah, our, the city's current place brand strategy concluded in twenty twenty-three. So we're looking to revive that strategy with a go-forward, co-creative collaborative approach, leveraging the good work that's already happening with our partners. So like I said, not looking to sweep in with any sort of, you know, we've done our analysis of the landscape and here's the thing we think Edmonton is. We want those stories to come through organically. Because for example, what is needed from explore from an attraction perspective might be very different than what the post-secondary is are looking for from an innovation and an education perspective. But how do we as a city then coordinate and convene those stories in a strategic way to gain momentum beyond our city about why you want to live and invest here, et cetera?
Ideally, there's kind of one brand and then it can kind of go on to different things and it ties into how we get economic development.
Yeah, I think if you're looking at our place brand is important, it's important for setting your strategy, where you're going for an organization. If you're setting a strategy as council, we want that strategy to be reflected in that place brand. You know, what are we trying to achieve? What are the outcomes we're looking for? And how do you have a place brand that leans into economic development, into, you know, why Edmonton, all of the things?
Okay, I love that and I'd love to help with that as we move forward. Second question, sector specification, I guess on it. So we know seventy percent of Edmonton retail is service sector, sorry. I wonder if we can get a little more laser focused on those sectors and what that plan would be moving forward to help them. So if we're looking at food and beverage or automotive or apparel or whatever that is, I think seeing that level of detail would be really helpful for me, right? So I'm sure we can probably look more into the percentages and see what are those big ones that we actually have in Edmonton, the opportunity. So that's some feedback. Third one is just on approvals. I guess you say in your mindset, do we need to be obviously more aggressive on some of our permitting and approval? We've seen that in terms of housing. We've seen kind of how that's done. Is that something we need to look at for industrial and other areas as well?
There's been a number of, so as you noted, on the residential side, we've done some significant work and are seen across Canada as number one in terms of how we deliver that service. The permitting process that we're built, is built off of that for what we do for businesses, but we are taking a focused attention to engage with our stakeholders on what improvements we can make to make it easier to get a permit as you navigate a new business permit. But we do have a client liaison unit, which for those bigger But we do have a client liaison unit, which, um, for those bigger, higher impact projects, there are a single point of contact. Uh, we take a project management approach where they, um, get in the, we work back from the day they want to get in the ground. On the industrial side, we launched, um, a permit process that guarantees permit timelines for certain project types. So we're, we have a number of areas where we've done some specific work, but more recently we are launching a, a business improvement process, related to permitting for businesses.
Do you, do you think that's maybe more of a communication issue that we need to show what we're doing to accelerate some of these approvals? Like taking a page out of the pro, like is it that sort of shot clock idea or that sort of thing is to, to let them know that we're taking those actions and moving forward?
Um, absolutely. There's always an opportunity to, uh, champion and share the, the improvements that we have made. Um, we have, you know, on the, on the residential side automated permits. Uh, so you can apply for a permit this morning and get your permit that day to build a house, um, in certain contexts. So, uh, there's a lot of innovation that we've leveraged, uh, in our permitting system to, uh, make it easier and faster, and more predictable in terms of the environment for our businesses. So there's always a journey of continuous improvement. We always want to, uh, continue and improve in that space.
Appreciate, okay. Final question, I think I have time. Uh, we talked about shovel-ready opportunities, right? Um, what, and that's obviously unique from us and other municipalities. Um, I'd love to see some kind of, uh, examples of what those could be, right? What are those things we need to take advantage of that are kind of ready for businesses?
Good, that's excellent feedback and we have our industrial update to council. Uh, I think it's in Q-two of twenty twenty-six. So we'll have more of that information.
Thank you very much, Councilor Salvador.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks so much for the, the thorough presentation. Uh, I just wanted to ask about the, I think it's the agencies review that's underway. Um, I believe that's coming in the new year, correct?
It is, yes.
Yeah. And for the scope of that, will that cover, uh, I guess more of an ecosystem approach, looking at roles, mandates, um, and even touching a little bit on a point that was made earlier in the discussion about what does that pipeline of deals look like? And where are those handoff points?
It won't necessarily, uh, look at the process of how we, uh, navigate our work with each of those agencies. It's around the role and mandate, budget and outcomes, uh, of our key partners.
Okay, when was the last time we did, um, a review of that type? Will this be the first time in a while?
It's been less than five years since a similar review was done.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm really, really looking forward to that one. Um, cause one piece of feedback that I have heard is I think there's a desire for, um, just, while, while there's internal clarity around roles and mandate, uh, being able to understand that sort of externally as well. So folks know where to plug in, um, and where to go depending, you know, where they're at in their process. I think there's value there for sure. Uh, so another question I, I haven't heard yet, uh, the Edge Fund. Do we have a next iteration planned for the Edge Fund?
What we have lined up is, um, at the end of the two-year term of the Edmonton Edge Fund, a commitment to come back to council, to talk about the results that, uh, came from the Edge Fund. And at that point would be a decision point whether it would, um, continue or, um, come to a close.
Okay, and that would be when?
That would be in twenty twenty, either the end of twenty twenty-six or the beginning of twenty twenty-seven. I'll have to check that specifically, Counselor.
Okay, okay. Uh, and with that evaluation, will there also be some opportunities to provide maybe like recommendations for how to improve going forward? Uh, learnings and adjustments we might want to make?
That's the exact intent, yes.
Perfect. Uh, and in the absence of having the Edge Fund, because my understanding is it was created to fill a gap, in funding available, uh, to entrepreneurs, investors, that are operating in our current market. Is there any other program or, or funding stream that is available similar to Edge Fund?
Not directly. Um, we would still look to funding from other orders of government or those angel investors, VCs in the ecosystem. So I would say that there isn't an exact replica of the Edge Fund to fill the gap.
Okay, okay. Well, I look forward to that conversation, uh, and evaluation. Uh, I did want to just share, I think you've, you've heard it a couple of times, but, uh, I, I have also been hearing just, you know, challenges with permitting, potential lag times, uh, for inspection. So great to hear that improvements, um, are underway on that front. Uh, oh, a, a question about the strategy refresh. Um, understanding that that's already underway, yes, yes.
It is.
Uh, the scope of that, is that going to be, a kind of, you know, maybe clarifying, consolidating a few of the outstanding actions? Is that the intention?
That is part of the intention. There are twenty-four actions in the existing, um, action plan. Twelve of them have been completed. And then you heard in today's presentation, some of the challenges we're facing. So now is a really good time to recalibrate, take what we've heard from the ecosystem and set us on a path for, the next several years to really capitalize and get those outcomes we're, we're looking for.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Salvador, another key piece of this, I would say, is to ensure that we've got focus, uh, and clarity on, on what we're trying to achieve.
Thank you, Council Parmer.
Hi, thank you very much for this, um, presentation. Economic development, I think, is very exciting, especially after yesterday's budget, discussions. Um, and so a couple of things, um, I think, uh, you know, Ms. Petron, you and I have talked about this before. I sat in council about really highlighting the wins. And I think we've heard a lot of that across the board from all of the other counselors. Um, and that, that really helps with our competitiveness if we continue to highlight those wins and tell those stories. Even from individual business owners who are getting those permitting, um, done. Because, you know, I think we often hear from the ten to twenty percent of people who are not, um, experiencing, the city service to the level of we want it. So if we could be able to do that, I think that's, um, great. I, I hear about the clear regulatory environment and I think in yesterday, um, a few of our counselors, um, we were at Minister Williams breakfast yesterday with the Edmonton Chamber of Commerce. And actually Minister highlighted Edmonton as the gold standard that could even help the ministry, um, with the mandate letter in terms of the automatic yes and really be a leader in the provincial space as well. So I wanted to, um, to share that with administration and, um, uh, and it's great to hear that. Um, I think what we've also heard is like just the positive attitude of being pro-business, is something that will actually help drive investment here regardless of policy, money. Um, and so just having that, um, that attitude of being a pro-business mindset and being able to work with, is very helpful. So if we continue to do that both on council side as well as, um, as well as admin side. I think one of the things that I wanted to ask is like, how can we help administration, on a lot of this economic plan? Because I think it's the first time, maybe it's just because there's just so much reading that the economic action plan, um, I think we've heard a lot that we've had a lot of people move into Edmonton but not have a lot of jobs. Uh, and so job creation is, is, should be one of the number one things that we as a city, um, help lead. And so how can we help, um, in that space?
Counselor, I think first and foremost is establishing this as a priority of council. Um, that provides clear direction for administration to, uh, set out what the, the work plan looks like. Definitely as a priority, we see creating jobs, growing our non-residential tax base and being business friendly. Our key three, um, emerging, uh, topics for our, our, uh, economic action plan. Um, I think, you know, having council be a champion of why Edmonton, why invest here. Uh, what's great about Edmonton is also helpful to continue to build that narrative, which you, you just alluded to in your remarks. So appreciate that feedback.
Okay, that's great. I think it's interesting about the reputation because I think this has been a very, very similar conversation we've had in terms of, what's council's priorities, what is, what is the reputation? Uh, yesterday, I think we got, we were, a lot of us were at the tourism, um, awards and heard that, um, Edmonton was number one in Canada for sports city and number twenty-two in the world. Um, which is incredible for a city of our size. Um, and really also heard that the volleyball tournament, uh, something that maybe we all didn't really know about or hear about, brought in forty million dollars from an economic perspective. Um, you know, when we lock, when we look at, you know, the CFR is bringing thirty-five million dollars. To think that a volleyball tournament could bring that much into Edmonton is, is really something that I'd love to be able to focus on. I think when we go through our strategic plan as council, um, mayor, is that, you know, um, having a couple of counselors or a few counselors kind of take on a lead in this economic plan, would be something that would be great in terms of portfolios. And I'm happy to put my name forward as well. Uh, with, you know, Counselor Clark, who's already been number one on the board there. Um, I think the other thing I will say is I think with downtown, you actually can't have a great city with a really, um, with a, with a downtown that doesn't work. And so I'd love to be able to really dig into some strategies around there. I think we've heard it door knocking is that, you know, Edmonton needs to have a great downtown that's vibrant. We've heard it through five-point-two percent of tax, um, and less than one percent of land. That is huge. And when the downtown does well, Edmonton as a city does well. And so that should be something that I think that is incredibly, something, something that we should really focus on. So thank you once again for the presentation.
Thank you, Council Chance.
I have a very high-level question and then a very granular question. Um, as a thought experiment, I was trying to look at the last, uh, five or ten places I spent money. And a disturbing number of it is e-commerce or paying for, not at the local bookstore, but, but maybe buying, uh, something else and just thinking about how, there's so many empty storefronts all over in terms of small-scale retail, yet we have these massive warehouses seeing, more and more deliveries, seeing more and more groceries being delivered. We talk about having small-scale retail, but, aside from the cannabis shops, which now can almost, uh, they're lobbying to have cannabis delivery too. Um, what is, what is the, the hope right now for small-scale retail? And, and if not, how are we going to rethink many of these, um, assumptions that we built in? We can only have so many personal hair salons, et cetera, like physical use items.
So Counselor Jones, that is absolutely a trend in our retail sector and our small retailers that we have heard from the business community. It's one that, uh, we do need to do some work on understanding more. We do know that there are some trends in our retail sector that are really important for, to keep us, uh, mindful of. The first is ensuring there are customers that are available and willing to go into those storefronts. So our BIAs play a, a fairly large role in helping to support those types of activities and bringing in people through festivals and other events. Big events we have in our city also make a difference with someone who's a visitor who's forgets something. They don't have time to order something. They pop into the store. So having those mechanisms in places where people are actually doing physical shopping really matters. The other thing is, um, the type of in-person shopping, um, is something to keep in mind with those trends as well. There's something right now that's happening in North America around, um, what's called experiential, uh, retail, where people go in to buy a product, but it's not just about the product, it's about, um, what they experience when they're in the shop. Whether they get some customization photo or something else. And you're starting to see that come up in ways in Edmonton. I understand that that's not necessarily something that's accessible to the small retailer at this point in time. But all this to say, there's more work for us to do to explore how we support those retailers.
Counselor Jones, if I may just add, um, this speaks to the importance of how we build our city. Um, so city plan is really focused around nodes and corridors, concentrating density, around those nodes and corridors where you can create a mix of uses, allowing people to walk and shop and live and play. Um, and so by having more people in those spaces, um, provides, um, a customer. And so I think as we continue to grow our city in a more, uh, in a different way, we'll create, uh, really unique places where, uh, those small local retail shops, um, will be successful.
I think one of the challenges with destinations like on White Av is you have some storefronts that are, closed and have been vacant for a long time. And, and, and there's a couple of new buildings that have yet to have a client in them. How economically is there both the carrot and the stick? Because a, a closed storefront doesn't just harm the economic potential of the, the unit, it's the neighbors who are harmed too. What tools do we have to incentivize, um, occupancy or require occupancy or something else?
So I understand and, uh, I think, uh, Stacy may have some, uh, something to add. But I believe the city is looking at problem properties, um, specifically in the business context. Similar to what we've seen in successful residential properties. We're not there yet, but it's, it's a piece that we're looking at.
Yeah, because you know, the one, the one empty tooth destroys the whole smile. And yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Council McCatt.
Oh, thank you. And, uh, thank you for the excellent presentation and work. Uh, I really appreciate it. So, I guess the, the first question I would have is, um, about low-hanging fruit. Um, there, you know, I understand like looking at the slide, uh, where there are less impactful, uh, industrial, commercial developments and much more impactful. And, I'm just wondering how we stage and phase this out while being aggressively attracting more business? Because we need money now, we need employment now, but we also need those higher value returns in the mid and long term.
So I think, um, building on some of the things Kim was talking about, um, that continuous improvement. It's looking at the ways that we can reduce barriers across all avenues. So, um, dollars will flow to areas where there are the fewest number of barriers. And we've got to strike the balance between how do we build the city that Edmontonians want, as well as grow in the way that we need. And so there's, unfortunately, there's not one answer to that. But it's, it's, we've got to look at both of those factors and it's right in that area of, of looking at the barriers as well as how do we in, make, um, uh, those opportunities to get to yes quicker. And so that's an ongoing process, um, that you will see, I think, threaded throughout all of our economic development work.
Yeah, capital flows along a path of least resistance.
Correct.
But, so, you know, I think about things like, um, you know, I'll, I'll pull an example. Um, in, in the public eye, a hundred million dollars for bike lanes. Sounds like a lot of money. But you break it up, it's twenty-five billion per year. And if you break that down per capita, it's about two bucks per person. Uh, a year in Edmonton, uh, for the four years that we're building the, the bike lanes. So it sounded like a big number, but when you break it down, it's, it's very minimal. So when we turn that lens to industrial and, and commercial and downtown development, what are the things that don't just sound like a big, uh, impact, but actually will be an impact? So, you know, the, we, we have that danger of maybe sometimes saying like, oh wow, that's like a, it's a twenty million dollar investment, which we love and we want it. But we want the billion-dollar investment.
Counselor McCatt, I think through our work, we're always looking at, uh, clarity on the problem that needs to be solved. Um, because doing lots of things that don't have an impact or an outcome is, is not helpful. Um, so when we work with our, you know, business community and our investors and we get feedback, we're really trying to focus in on, where is the problem that we need to solve so that we remove those barriers and get to yes more often? Um, and so that's part of our work through the Industrial Investment Action Plan and as well, uh, on the Economic Action Plan, to be clear on, on how we're trying to attack this problem.
Okay. And so what I've heard from industry and maybe they're just saying this, but I think there's some, some truth to it, that it's easier to develop outside of Edmonton, not just for the, uh, mill rate, but just less barriers to capital flowing. And so if we look at what the region is doing, are we, you know, with our permitting, with our concierge servicing, with getting things moving, where would you place us in relation to that?
Specifically from, uh, feedback from our Edmonton global partner, um, permitting has never been a reason of why a decision didn't happen in Edmonton.
Not the length of time or anything like that?
That's not the feedback we've received.
So is it just, does it really just come down to that mill rate or, uh, what?
I think there's a number of factors. I, I, I can recognize that, you know, some, uh, industrial developers that are working inside and outside of the city, are maybe not, you know, dealing with an FDI, uh, type of opportunity and maybe looking more locally. Um, our standards can be different between, um, uh, what's happened or expectations in the city of Edmonton and what can be in the county. But as part of our Industrial Investment Action Plan, we're looking at that. Uh, that's one of the actions is to look at our design standards. So whether it's permitting, um, or shovel, having shovel-ready land or the standards to develop, we're looking at all of those things.
Okay, so servicing as well?
Yes.
We, we have to have the item for sale for it to end up in Edmonton. And so for example, um, the Dow Chemical project, huge project. We didn't have the surface land at the size clustered close to other, close enough to the other operations that they needed. So that, that project was going to end up in the region, not necessarily in Edmonton city boundaries.
For now.
Thank you, Council Morgan.
Thanks, um, appreciate the presentation. Something I was like really excited about last term before I was on council, uh, was, uh, the nighttime economy and, and the. was the nighttime economy and, and the report around that, I guess. And, and I'm wondering how that fits in with, with discussions around this too, because I know there's a lot of nighttime businesses downtown especially that are, that are struggling. I actually even heard some, some talk about the ICE district and then work going on there, but I think there's a to support, to support the work there. I think that we have a, we, we need to be supporting vibrant downtown in general. So where are we at with that? What's going on? Talk to me.
So although we don't have a specific nighttime economy strategy per se, there's a lot of work going on in our downtown that does support our nighttime economy. When we're bringing in events collectively into our downtown or even into our conference center, visitors into our hotels. And then with the housing builds that are happening in our downtown, all of those things are intended to enable and support a nighttime economy. So although it may not be a strategy that is evident today, there's a lot of mechanisms under the downtown action plan that are intended to support the downtown economy. And we're starting to see the impacts of that. So for example, when we have major events in our downtown, many of our restaurants and other venues are full. And so I understand that is one, one lever and we just need to have more of that on a more consistent basis.
Yeah, like outside of, outside of those events, right? And so, I mean, I've even heard from like, I think it was with the, the restaurant that's across from Roger's place there that is really busy during hockey games, but outside that, struggling. So good. All right. Thanks.
Counselor, it speaks to the importance of the downtown action plan of, of bringing more people downtown, having more people live downtown and, and dealing with social disorder to help support a vibrant urban downtown. So it's a combination of all of those actions that will start to realize the benefits with our, our nighttime economy.
Was there, was there my, my understanding is that, 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 that report and that plan was kind of fell, fell by the wayside last term. Would that be the case?
There was a, a direction for council to bring an unfunded service package that was not funded.
Okay. So we're landing on council then, is what you're saying?
I, I would need to go back to
No. They, they might not be able to answer that question, but I, we can answer that question. Yes. Yes, it is on us.
And I don't, I don't.
If we don't fund things, it can ultimately be on council.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Appreciate that. Okay. And so then it, then it just died, basically. Just so I'm clear.
There, there's not a dedicated resource to take action on what the, the strategy had identified. But as Alyssa was saying, it's not to say that, you know, work is not happening in terms of how we're trying to support our economy in the downtown.
Okay. Thanks.
That's a really nice way to say, sort of. Counselor Rutherford, can you take the chair, please?
I have the chair, but only if you ask a question followed by talk to me.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. That's your new podcast name for John Morgan. Talk to me. So just a few items. I wanted to just, on the, on the place plan, the place brand strategy. I know you mentioned like, we're not trying to step on toes of others. I also just want to make sure at the same time, like I hear like different groups are doing different work and there's a difference between not stepping on toes, but also not being coordinated, which I know is sort of, so like how are we trying to serve as the coordinator? Because like I, I think I'd heard at one point the chamber was thinking of doing some work and looking from funding from partners, but Edmonton Global is doing some of that work. And so how do we make sure that we aren't actually accidentally seeing five different groups do five different things and then not actually align with what we're doing? And I know Counselor Pickett had a motion on that, and I think that's probably captured in that work, but just since it's before us.
Well, first of all, I'm really pleased to share that we just recently hired a Director of Marketing Creative and Digital Services who's very well connected in the industry. So starting to activate, reactivate those relationships and networking to just first have those awareness conversations with our partners, to bring them along the journey with us. I think is a really important step rather than sort of sweeping into any given room and just saying, here's what we've assessed and analyzed and we think this is a solution. We really want to co-create and co-develop that with the partners. Just recognizing there is good work happening in the, in the space. For example, the chambers we are YAG has a very definitive purpose. And I think there's a place for that in the collective stories of place brand.
So
I think it comes back to it's a team sport. Like what Kim talked about it, it's absolutely a team sport. This is not something that we're going to be doing on our own. We need to kind of coordinate some activity between our team Edmonton colleagues and how we represent our city globally.
Agreed. I guess what I'm wanting, you know, sports analogy is time. Yes. Here we go. Is who is the captain of this work? Because shouldn't it be us? Like I, I, I guess I want to make sure, because I don't know who the captain is right now of this team.
I think, I think
For that particular bodywork.
My answer to that would be absolutely yes.
Okay.
Like I think that the captain of the ship is, is the city itself. However, there is a, a need to make sure that we're, we're coordinating that activity with others. I think the lack of a captain in the past probably four or five years has led to other people to trying to jump into that seat. Rightfully so.
Somebody wanted to do something. So some others, yeah. So are we, you know, and, and again, we're not, we're not trying to be rude, but like, are we kindly communicating that, hey, we're, we, we've got this role now. We're, we're, we're captaining this and we want all of you part of this. But we want to make sure that there is some coordination that nobody is going to accidentally start doing something and go completely down a path where it maybe is misaligned.
I, I don't want to sound like a broken record.
Yeah.
But aligning our strategy and priorities with council is extremely important for me to be able to activate a strategic path forward. So landing on those priorities and, and that being one of them would be a great opportunity for me to start to advocate for that.
Okay, very good. Point well taken many times. I appreciate that. One last thing, I think you, just in your slide, you'd asked about, you know, what else have we heard? And I do just want to echo, I think what I've heard, what a number of other of our council colleagues have talked about. You know, I know we do amazing work with the client liaison unit, but again, that had been focused on big clients. I do believe the Cal, City of Calgary does have something for more small and medium sized businesses as well. And I know we're doing work. I, I think I still heard a lot from people, small and mid-sized businesses, that they are feeling that the that process is still very complicated for them. And I know you're working on it. I'm, and I think we need to be a little more deliberate about the work we're going to do to make sure that that process for small and medium sizes is ideally the same as the big, because ninety percent of our businesses are small and medium sized. So.
Appreciate that feedback and also the point around how we communicate with our businesses of the work that's coming.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. I'll move another round of questions.
Seconded by Counselor Wright. We have a second round of questions on the floor. Anyone to, to speak to this? Guessing no, so please vote. I'm a yes. Yes.
Counselor Prince P is yes?
Thank you, Counselor Prince P. Thank you, Counselor.
Yes.
Jones. Just waiting on Counselor Elliott. Thank you, Counselor Elliott. We have all the votes.
Please display the votes. And that is carried and I will return the chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor Rutherford. Counselor Tang.
Great. Lots of great questions and I, I feel like it's a bit of a a hint perhaps where our priority might lie. Anyway, anyhow, we'll wait for that formal discussion for alignment. I'm just wanted to maybe follow up on a few, just so I can have a bit of a closure. So I thought there were some good lines of questioning around support for smaller and medium size. I do want to acknowledge administration's memo from back in June around red tape reduction. I think what the challenge I continue to hear, because I never have emails around housing development permit and be like, this is really held up. It's almost always from the smaller and medium enterprises. And we're talking about permitting, so commercial tenant improvement. I think the memo has some really great points about licensing. But for example, the guarantee timelines program, that's really for industrial partners. I would love to see that, some kind of a guarantee program. And if that's what's coming in fall of this year, great. So I just want to see if my understanding is right.
So certainly we have had focus on our residential improvements. The zoning bylaw is also a really important part of streamlining things for businesses, because things were getting overly complex of what you could do in one zone versus another. We're also sharing information, you know, with other people in the ecosystem like brokers who are working with small businesses to move into a space so that there's more clarity on the next steps and how to navigate those. We have our business friendly team that's trying to be a point of contact for businesses and help with that wayfinding. And we've seen the demand for that team move up, but yes, absolutely hear very clearly the importance of supporting on the permitting side, whether it's a development permit or a building permit. And that's the work we're undertaking.
And I think I've heard the same thing about the business friendly team that their demand has grown, but the, the size of the team hasn't really. So and I'll just put that out there around circling back to my question around, is this, is the resourcing adequate? No action for now, but I'll just flag that. And then back to that memo, I see the references to user experience, but it's largely in the form of service satisfaction survey. I think we can do more to understand what some of the, especially like say newcomer businesses, you know, I've had many conversations with business owners in my ward. People don't know what they don't know. And especially they're so new to a system as large as ours, it's really difficult for people to navigate. And I always direct them to business friendly. So just on, I think one of the questions I've heard around, you know, everyone's releasing their state of the economy report. You know, I would love to, to have for that upcoming April, the economic development refresh. You know, I'm kind of looking for a little bit of like, what is our strength and weakness from cities perspective? I know there's a lot of analysis around sectors and, you know, where are we weak on overall, but really from the city's lens, what's that, what's that? Like a bit of a SWOT analysis for, for, for our sector, that would be great. You know, one of the tools I've seen the government of Alberta release that lots of other municipalities have a huge uptick on is the site selector tool. I'm back to the, my very first question to you Alyssa around that pipeline. Do we use stuff like that? Are we like when I think about large external conventions and whatnot, we don't really have a coordinated team. Not, never mind team Edmonton, but not even team Alberta approach. When we go out to attract those, those businesses and that, that is worrisome. And I know like the government's developing tools like that. I just want to know that we're leveraging those opportunities and we're, you know, we're like putting our hands and be like, hey, you know, we're, our sites are awesome. We're ready. Or here's our shorts coming and this is where we need to kind of work on.
Counselor Tang, I missed the tool you're referring to.
The site selector.
So the site selector tool we co-created with the province in terms of the Edmonton inputs. So the data that they're using for Edmonton sites is supported by City of Edmonton staff. And then the contact information related to Edmonton is one of my, my staff. So
So, so people are finding opportunities to invest in Edmonton through that, would you say?
I would say yes. I think that that is potentially where they start. Where they eventually land might be different, but it definitely is a tool that is critical for us to be a part of. And to not develop something separate and different, we're leveraging something that exists and the, the province has leaned into their own efforts.
Okay, good. I don't want us to be duplicating either. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rutherford.
Thank you. Just a few more follow-up things. One of the things that I think I really need that I, I haven't really seen thus far is that direct correlation with decisions we've made and then what the economic outcomes have been on that. So I think about things like the approval of the, the ramp at 137th. And it was only through like a casual conversation at public hearing the other day where it was even sort of like, yes, there has been interest and economic interest that's come out of that. But that hasn't been anywhere where we can actually point and say, look, this council is business friendly. We made this decision to unlock lands, these lands have now been unlocked and this is the, the outcome. So I feel like we need more, I, at least I do, I need more talking points of like that linkage between decisions we're making at council. I think about we made that one policy change for the first in person not having to take on all the costs and then the wait for the build out, right? I don't know if that's actually done anything. Like has it?
Yes. And that's good feedback for us to further follow up and share information with council in terms of you made this decision. You know, this, these are some of the outcomes that we've seen. So I can take that away.
And I think even telling Edmontonians that story too, right? Because if we don't know it, then Edmontonians definitely don't know it. So that would be something that I would like to see more of. Two more things just on, I, I do think when we talk about the place brand strategy, it needs to be very strengths focused. I would like to see it be very strengths focused and I don't want it to be a repeat of what Explore Edmonton has already done. So I would be very disappointed if that's what the outcome looks like. When I went to the state of the economy luncheon, I know a couple of my other colleagues were there to I found that they, they made some really compelling points about how connected we are globally, actually more than any other Canadian city. Like we're the closest major city to China where, you know, we have that port in and, and our airlines, you can get to Japan quicker than basically anyone from our international airport. And I don't think, I, I honestly truly think if we're talking about, you know, the future e-commerce, all of those things, how are we positioning Edmonton? In that space of like, this is what makes Edmonton the place that you can't, you can't get that kind of connectivity to the world in other Canadian, major Canadian municipalities. So that's what I'd like to see. So that's, and I, and I thought they did a really good job of that. So I'd be curious of my, my other colleagues that were there, but I, I really was like, oh, this made, if I was an investor, hearing some of these things, I'd be like, yes. And we have the Yellowhead corridor, right? We were investing a billion dollars in to increase connectivity. But have we seen new businesses come to the Yellowhead corridor? I don't think I have, right? So I think there's a lot there. I do think there's a tension that we need to shore up as part of this strategy and get clear for administration on. So I think it's more what they need, even though they don't want to say what they need. Is, is that what level of regional, like what level of like boastfulness and Edmonton focused are we going to take versus that regional collaboration? And I think there has to be some sort of unification on where we are. And I don't think we're, we're coordinated on that. So would you agree, Mr. City Manager?
Any direction I can get, I would love to have.
Yeah. And then the last question I have is, this is all really great, but kind of to, to Counselor Morgan's point. Are there, this is all great in theory, but we actually need to have service packages and we have to have staff and funding behind it. So I, I guess what do we need to consider both in this SOBA? But also as we tee up for the four-year budget that is currently hindering us, it's not funded, that is hindering us from achieving these economic goals.
So maybe, maybe I'll let her talk about this year and I'll talk about the four-year budget. Do you want to start there?
So Counselor, we are, you know, looking for the direction from council in terms of priorities. That's how it helps us mobilize around pace and scale of leaning into economic development as a priority. And we will bring you that economic action plan. You have the industrial investment strategy or action plan and the development action or downtown action plan. And it's like
But they're all unfunded, right?
We have some work that's ongoing and, and there, we will tell you when there are areas that you can go faster or do more. And that's where we would need to look at how we resource it. Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Pickett.
Yeah, thank you. So circling back a little bit on, on what we were talking about with with the industrial and commercial and the downtown. So we, as I said, we need money now, obviously. We're a little bit constrained, but also want to ask about maybe the, the philosophy or strategy of also foregoing some funds in the short term in order to incentivize more development and more investment and then we reap the rewards over time.
So Counselor Pickett, as part of the Industrial Investment Action Plan, one of the actions is around how do we incentivize? What, what should we do to, what's the right tool to use to incentivize investment now? So we are bringing that work to council next year in 2026. So we will, we'll provide, you know, options and analysis around what council can do.
I was just hoping for a sneak peek. I was being a little sneaky there. Okay. So next is the downtown. I'm just curious, you know, we've, we've, you know, we did the warehouse park, which was an investment to, to spur more investment. The downtown, I'm just curious, you know, we've we've, you know, we did the warehouse park, which was an investment to to spur more investment. We've got the Jasper project ongoing, we've got the LRT ongoing. And then we've got the CRL extend expansion or extension and then the, it'd be great if it expansion here. And then the 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 various housing accelerated grants and student housing grants, things like that. So I guess the question is, where are we at with that as far as commitments from developers? How many cranes are are we going to see in the sky next year?
We will have announcements around the student housing incentive in the shortly. But you can see that our investment in the warehouse park is already working and it just opened up. So we have a project that's already there and a number of others on in construction or in planning. In the early part of next year, you'll also see a body of work that administration will advance related to an attainable housing incentive for downtown. So again, looking to draw more people into the downtown to live here, which adds to the vibrancy and the economic benefits of downtown.
All right.
So I I don't have the.
I couldn't get sneaky on that one either.
I don't have the the data in front of me, but certainly, you know, maybe that is something I could reflect on is how we can communicate. You know, the achievements of downtown in twenty twenty five. In terms of permitting and and investment that we have.
And then the last question is about goal setting, about benchmarks, about. You know, the the grander vision and is that something we want to keep internal or do we want to put it out there? Like, look, we want to have X amount of industrial investment by this year, this year, this year. We want X amount of downtown population growing this year and so on and so forth. Are we, you know, because there's two ways to do it. One is an iterative sort of conservative approach. The other is to say, you know what, we're going to swing for the fences and we're going to aim for the moon. And if we don't make it there, it will accelerate us far faster than a conservative analysis and and forecast.
We absolutely need performance measures so that we know what we're trying to achieve and we track how we get there. And so those metrics will come, we've established them for the industrial investment action plan. And we'll also have it for the economic work. So we'll bring that to council for feedback.
Because I understand there is a risk in in that, in that on one hand, it's like if you go too small, it's like, okay, great. If you go too big, you don't want people to scoff, right? So finding that happy medium, but honestly, I I prefer to go big every single time.
The other important part of this work will also be to ensure there's clarity among our partners with Edmontonians, with our business community on the problems we're trying to solve collectively. And how we're going about to get there so that we're all rowing in the same direction, so to speak. And so that's a body of work in terms of communication and engagement with specific, you know, interested parties and business community. That will be an important part of this work.
Yeah. Here's the problem I'm trying to solve, prosperity and fiscal independence. And everything we can do to work backward from that is fantastic. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stevenson.
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to close the loop on another gap that I think we've talked about previously. Is just a a focal point or dedicated strategy to downtown economic attraction. Just wanting to get your thoughts, I, you know, I appreciate we've had some conversation about our our bigger economic agencies. So Edmonton Global, Explore Edmonton, but just wondering how we also connect and coordinate with our business improvement areas. And also the commercial real estate sector, which I think does a lot of that promotion work as well. So any thoughts on on sort of that that coordination up and down?
So when it comes to our work on the our three big economic strategies, economic action plan, industrial. And downtown, they are included in those conversations throughout its development, its iteration, its implementation. So our our BIAs play a big role in in terms of giving us feedback from their five thousand members. And our commercial brokers are probably, I would say, are both in downtown and in industrial. Also sit at the tables and play a big role and bring a perspective that we want to make sure is reflected in our work going forward. So it's it's I I really appreciate having them collectively at the table because when we work together, we have all of their perspectives. Versus just one informing our direction going forward. So they're already included in the process. And if there's things where we could be doing more further with them, we're open to that.
Counselor Stevenson, I would just add the other piece to this too is in terms of how we communicate and engage industry around what we are doing and what is happening. Over the last year, I've been surprised that not everyone knew that we had Warehouse Park coming online this year. And the incredible investment and the opportunity that it brings to our downtown. So that's another piece we're starting to think about is like, how do we get everyone aware of what we're doing? Because you can share our story to your investors or businesses that are looking to locate in the downtown.
Yeah, and that actually raises a point which I know we're not going to resolve today. But it's interesting, I. I don't know that I see Edmonton as being the captain so much as the. Like the one who makes sure that everyone has their water bottles and makes sure that they have the equipment that they need. You know, like I think, I think it's really thinking about. Where do those skills lie? Where does that genius lie? Not that it doesn't need to be a huge priority and a huge focus for us. But thinking, are are we the best marketers or are the commercial realtors out there the best marketers? Is Explore Edmonton the best marketer? But then we are the connection point so that when, you know, there's. One of the other agencies have attracted someone that they plug into us and we work through a seamless process. So any any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I I don't I don't disagree. When I when I say captain of the ship, I think there's an inherent place brand thing that has to land with the city council. Like, city council has to agree that this is who we want to be, you know, who you want, what city do you want for the next five years, ten years, twenty years? Like, what what do you want, what do you want that to be? I think there's an element of that you have to agree with as city council. Does that mean that we're going to be steering the ship on everything external and? And how those things go? Not necessarily. I mean, we have lots of partners that we play with in the sandbox here that are very good at doing those things. And their strength is there. So like leveraging the strengths where we need it, but I think I think the place brand itself has to land with this city council.
Interesting, and. Because. Because I think there's the place branding that has a purpose of attracting investment. I think there's also. But again, are are we best placed to know what what is attractive to investors? Like, I think what we said is the the strategic vision for the future of the state, which is which is much more holistic. And I don't know that that's what is appealing from a marketing perspective.
Yeah, I like I said, it's a team sport. There's there's lots of people that are going to be engaged in this conversation. So when we look at landing what that looks like, it's not just us deciding what that looks like. But we do have great professionals in our organization that, we have city economists, we have people that know what the levers are that are going to, that are game changers for us to change. You know, the prosperity of of what the city looks like itself, you know, what that tax environment looks like for us and how do we, how do we promote? You know, what's coming out of, even when you go down, it's not even just about the chamber or or Explore Edmonton. We're talking about the the colleges and universities, you know, they graduate forty thousand students a year. Do we have places for those people to land and keep them here in the city of Edmonton? What kind of businesses are we attracting to make sure that we have a place and spot for those people as they graduate, those kinds of things? So it goes well beyond, just it's not a very small thing, it's a very big thing. And it's a team sport, it's not just us, there's a lot of people in that sandbox to talk to and and make sure that they're involved.
Thank you very much. Those are all the questions. So we will move on to the presentation at least for item seven five. I don't know if we'll get into questions. The good news is we still have tomorrow morning scheduled for the remainder of the orientation. So we'll go through the presentation, we'll see if there's time for questions. If not, we'll start with questions tomorrow. And then finish with item seven point four tomorrow. So whenever you're ready. Is there a slight delegation change? Excellent.
We don't need five minutes this time, though.
Excellent. Good, we will maximize our time to make sure we're in good shape.
A little cleanup here.
Five is next and then four tomorrow.
All right, we'll get started while we're cleaning up over here.
Absolutely, yeah, no worries, no worries.
So. So I'll begin today's session with a high level overview before passing it over to Deputy City Managers Kim Petrin and Sarah Nichols to deliver the remainder of the presentation. We have members of ELT here as well to answer any questions that you may have at the end of the presentation. So two weeks ago, I shared a high level overview of our five focus areas, which are the strategic pillars guiding our work. Although they appear as separate, but they're highly integrated on a daily basis. Between now and November twenty sixth, we will we will dedicate, we'll be, we'll dedicate focus sessions to explore each of these areas in detail. Moving beyond the what to understand the the how and the why. These focus areas are were developed to facilitate a connection between budget and business planning and the city's overall strategic plan. They align directly with Connect Edmonton, the city plan, as you've heard on November seventeenth. As a result, they will inform the twenty seven to thirty budget and business plans. This will provide clarity and ensure the budget decisions are aligned with outcomes of the focus areas. The focus areas provide cross corporate language and aid in a results based decision making. Fosters collaboration and proactively manage or proactively planning for work that helps us to achieve the outcomes. While there is inherent overlap between different focus areas, each session will be tailored to specifically provide city council. With the high level overview of what worked, what work that, what's the work that drives directly towards our identified outcomes of that focus area. These sessions will demonstrate how work will, how we will work across the seventy lines of business, drive towards our specific outcomes. If each focus area ultimately the goals of the city plan. These sessions prioritize our role as a municipality in delivering programs and services to Edmontonians each and every day. In a responsible and focused way. Growth planning is essential for shaping Edmonton's physical, environmental and future or financial future. It is the mechanism that ensures we become livable, connected and fiscally responsible city, directly informing all of our strategic goals. For example, increasing our non-residential tax base, which we just discussed. We'll look at impact on on Edmontonians to ensure it is a high quality of life, creating livable and connected communities. It uses data informed strategies and guarantees services and amenities are available for all residents that the city. As as the city evolves. And looking at the organization, it delivers a long term efficiency that finance that and financial stability. It manages growth and fiscal responsibility, preventing unforeseen costs and maximizing the use of existing infrastructure. Building on the the growth, the critical need for growth planning, we've identified two outcomes to guide our efforts. These these represent the strategic intent of managing Edmonton's evolution towards a vibrant and sustainable city. The first outcome is that growth is managed with data informed oversight and coordination of built form. Which means, what that means is growth is carefully orchestrated and and not ad hoc. We will actively develop and implement district level capital infrastructure plans for both growth and renewal areas. The impact of this outcome is that the proactive approach guarantees the sustainable and efficient provision of asset types. Roads, utilities, parks and facilities, ensuring smart design and integrates new and existing communities seamlessly. The second outcome is that growth is managed with regard to long term fiscal impacts. What this means is that it's about our financial prudence in all growth decisions. We are committed to fiscally or to fiscal responsible growth and managing the full lifecycle costs of infrastructure. And services looking beyond immediate costs to consider maintenance, operations and the eventual replacement, which is the total cost of ownership. In the broader context, this includes active collaboration with other levels of government on policy, regulations and equitable financial investments. To optimize resources for Edmontonians. These two outcomes provide clear direction on on planning our city, representing our commitment to thoughtful, data driven development. And prioritizes both community, livability and financial responsibility. Successful, sustainable growth isn't accidental. It's it demands clear collaborative partnership between council and administration. Council handles the high level governance, setting long term vision, providing strategic oversight, approving critical legislation and finance. Administration focuses on the operational execution, translating a strategy into tangible results on the ground. Handling technical planning and department coordination, managing lifecycle costs carefully. The key is the alignment of both both of these common objectives. The integrated approach ensures growth is ambitious, yet well managed, resilient and fiscally responsible. This is the way that we can deliver efficient infrastructure and balanced regional development and balanced regional development. I'll now hand it over to Kim Petrin and to Sarah Nichols for the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Hedy. The remainder of the presentation will have three sections. First, we'll provide context into growth in Edmonton and the context of which we are planning for growth, knowing that city plan acts as our roadmap. As you'll see in the upcoming data, growth doesn't come without challenges. We are going to outline some of those for you today. Lastly, we'll end with a slide on how we're addressing these growth challenges. For us to move forward in an integrated way as we approach the next budget cycle, it is important that we are all working from a similar understanding of how our city is growing. CMHC published a housing supply gap report in late June that indicated the Edmonton region remains affordable. Is projected to remain affordable compared to other major cities and no additional supply of market housing is required. As the projected housing builds will be sufficient to maintain affordability over the next decade. Although the pace of population growth may not be sustained, Edmonton is expected to keep growing and it's invital to keep planning for this growth. The city plan provides a blueprint to accommodate a growing population. It advances residential and non-residential infrastructure renewal and growth in a way that is environmentally, socially and fiscally responsible. We have the most, we have most recently experienced significant growth as you can see from the spike in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. The population grew by over one hundred thousand people from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four. This is equivalent to a ten percent growth over two years, which is the strongest rate of growth in any recent two year period. When city plan was being developed in twenty nineteen, it was anticipated that the one point two five million population threshold wouldn't be achieved until about twenty thirty two. Today, the chief economist is forecasting that threshold could be reached in twenty twenty seven, five years earlier. This accelerated growth of rate of growth has been driven by net in migration of all kinds, international, interprovincial and intra provincial. While we while we will still experience growth, the growth rate is expected to decrease over the next several years. As a result of federal changes to international immigration policy and work and study permits. The rapid pace of growth has led to proportionally more development in the outer areas of the city as these areas were posed to scale. This is in line with the city plans anticipated that growth in the first population horizon. The city plan anticipated early growth would largely be guided by existing approval of the area structure plans and neighborhood structure plans. Anticipated growth in the redeveloping area would be strongly influenced by market demand and previously identified investment programs. While this reflects some continuation of existing development patterns, this is not a signal of business as usual. The plan identifies activities that the city will undertake to both support already established priorities, further advancement of existing market demand. And create conditions for increased activity in the redeveloping areas in the next time horizon. The city plan provides direction for Edmonton to maintain and enhance Edmonton's relative affordability advantage within the context of Canada's big cities. Edmonton's shelter cost to income ratio remains below the benchmark of thirty percent for both owners and renters. It is the lowest amongst major Canadian cities, but it is not affordable for everyone. Edmonton has the third largest share of households in core housing need among big cities in Canada, following only Toronto and Vancouver. Approximately forty six thousand households or one in eight households in our city are living in core housing need. The proportion is higher for renters and in particular indigenous renters. Other pressures on household finances such as saving for a down payment, insurance premiums, utility costs and general inflation. Such as food and gas prices also put pressure on household finances and may make a market housing unit unattractive. In addition, homeowners may must also consider home maintenance costs and property taxes. Further, while Edmonton is experiencing high population growth, we also currently have high unemployment. Further, while Edmonton is experiencing high population growth, we also currently have high unemployment, currently at eight point seven percent, which is the highest in the province, and this is why the economic development we just discussed is a priority. Listed on the slides are areas where the city has influence on affordability. Land supply, zoning, user fees, property taxes and timelines, to name a few. Factors that the city has less influence on related to affordability are household income, population growth, mortgage rates and construction costs. The city is made up of three broad development pattern areas. The redeveloping area, generally within the Anthony Henday in light gray. The developing area, primarily outside of Anthony Henday and north of forty first avenue southwest in green. And the future growth areas, lands south of forty first avenue, which in are shown in a lighter teal, and the non-residential lands in gray. These geographic areas are provide a clear organizing structure for growth. By virtue of growing within the current urban boundary, more high density homes are needed to accommodate new Edmontonians over the coming decades. This change in urban form will mean more efficient use of land resources in Edmonton and will involve welcoming more people into areas that may already be served by amenities, mobility, infrastructure and services. It may also involve increasing and improving amenities for people as neighborhoods and districts grow. New residential dwelling units will continue to be added to the redeveloping, developing and future growth areas, but will be increasingly concentrated in the redeveloping area. Because growth and investment can't occur everywhere at once, trade offs and sequencing will need to be made along the way. The redeveloping area will experience more incremental infill and strategic intensification. Similarly, existing non-residential areas will evolve, densify and redevelop with new businesses, emerging sectors and diverse employment opportunities. Developing and future growth areas will continue to provide greenfield development opportunities and non-residential growth taking their direction from approved plans. Next slide, and one more please. Planning choices influence more than the built form. They also shape the city's fiscal capacity. The types of development we permit and the intensity of land use that follows determine the market value of property. When those values are assessed in tax, they translate into property tax revenue for the city. It can take a new neighborhood twenty years or more to fully develop or five years from land acquisition, planning approvals, financing and construction for an infill site. Next slide. A financial assessment was conducted on the growth scenarios for developing the city plan. That report indicates that after accounting for potential capital costs, operating cost impacts and non-tax revenue, the total increase in net levy requirement at city plan buildout is calculated at eight percent lower than the business as usual scenario. How we build matters. One acre can accommodate different types of development and each will res- represent different property value, which will in turn generate different to amounts of property tax. Higher intensity of use leads to better operating cost efficiency and higher tax revenue. Next slide. This chart shows net new dwelling units approved along with the percentage of what was approved in the current redeveloping area versus the developing area boundary. The redeveloping area portion of growth is represented in the bar chart as a lighter shade of green. The city plan targets fifty percent of our growth to be within the redeveloping communities as infill. You can see unprecedented growth in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five to the end of Q three is almost as high as twenty twenty four annually. The portion of growth in redeveloping areas rebounded in twenty twenty five. To the end of Q three of twenty twenty four, forty four point five percent of new dwelling units were in the redeveloping areas. Working through our growing pains, the scale of growth has outpaced and stretched city operating and service provisions and the location of some city infrastructure and amenities have not kept pace with the areas of greatest growth. As a city, we need to plan for and prioritize both the renewal and growth of infrastructure in the redeveloping area, coupled with new infrastructure needed in the developing area, while also focusing on the economic development outcomes that generate tax revenues. In the developing areas alone, high volume and recent pace of growth has men- some of those areas still require amenities, services and facilities such as arterial roads, parks, recreation facilities, fire halls, libraries, transit service and schools. Next slide. One more please. Listed here is a list of policy actions that we're working on. Next slide. This long term city building work can generally be categorized as city plan implementation and much has been accomplished since the city plan was adopted in twenty twenty. The plan itself was developed with a philosophy of being adaptable and evergreen. Its ambition to remain evergreen is made possible due to its interim population increments of two hundred and fifty thousand along the planned growth trajectory to two million. It is at these population thresholds of one point two five million, one point five and one point seven five million that the plan sets the expectation for analysis to be conducted. Any such review should be scaled appropriately. The plan's core elements such as big city moves, guiding values and spatial guidance such as the nodes and corridors in the mass transit network, require much longer implementation timelines and all remain relevant for strategic decision making. That said, Edmonton, as I noted, is projected to hit the one point two five million population threshold shortly, five years sooner than was anticipated when the city plan was adopted five years ago. With such a relatively short time having passed, administration is considering what level of maintenance is necessary to ensure the plan remains effective in guiding present day decisions. Staying the course with respect to the city plan's long term vision will guide adequate time for plan implementation and maintain a predictable business environment. District plans were adopted in twenty twenty four about a year ago as part of the modernization of the planning system. This process involved replacing a patchwork of older plans and guidelines with a standard set of policies for urban design, land use, mobility and growth for all areas that don't have a local plan. New neighborhoods still require the level of detail required by local plans such as an area and neighborhood structure plan. When new planning guidance is needed for developed areas, it can be provided through projects that would amend the district plan or the district policy. The new zoning bylaw is the primary regulatory tool designed to support Edmonton's growth by implementing the vision of the city plan, which guides the city towards a population of two million. The last significant overhaul of the bylaw occurred in nineteen sixty one when the population was around two hundred and seventy six thousand. The previous bylaw was fundamentally outdated and complex, largely tied to a vision of a much smaller city. The zoning bylaw renewal initiative was a comprehensive overhaul of the bylaw that included rethinking how, what and why the city regulates in terms of zoning and land development. The rewrite focused on modernizing the city's approach to growth, housing and city bidding, building goals. The outcome is a strategic simplified and streamlined zoning bylaw to enable people, places and businesses to thrive and prosper. It is important to note that the zoning bylaw is not a static document, but one that is meant to change and evolve with our city. Next slide, please. We have a number of motions from council related to district plans. Our intention is to advance three port reports in the new year. One in Q one to address two motions related to Midbach redevelopment. In Q two, two motions received that are more broad in scope and scale. And given a new council, the intent is to bring committee a work plan and define the scope and engagement to confirm and clarify direction. In Q three, a district plan omnibus amendment, which would also include changes to the one thirty two avenue act- active transportation network. Council has also recently directed administration to provide a report related to the small scale residential zone that includes recommendations and implementa- implications on reducing the maximum number of dwellings on an interior site in the small scale zone, as well as options to reduce the impact of height on adjacent properties, using an advised leveling of engagement that draws upon past engagement and feedback and the options and recommendations previously provided to support maintenance and retention of trees on private property. This work is planned for urban planning committee in Q one of twenty twenty six. We are also managing growth by embedding climate strategies to build a resilient and affordable community. Our current decisions on city design, transportation, infrastructure and energy will shape our future climate resilience, reduce emissions and mitigate the long term costs of climate change. As Edmonton grows, these will help create affordable, resilient communities. Edmonton's two key climate strategies further define the city's goals and necessary actions through the adaptation strategy and the energy transition strategy. Administration is working to incorporate climate resilience measures through the planning and development process and will advance climate action plans next year. The Edmonton metro region includes over twenty municipalities, including thirteen with a population of over five thousand, along with three First Nations, an international airport, a national defense base and a national park. As you know, the Edmonton Metro Region Board was dissolved in twenty twenty five, so the Edmonton Metro Region Board's regional growth plan is no longer in effect. We are now required by the municipal government act to complete intermunicipal development plans and intermunicipal collaboration frameworks with each of our eight municipal neighbors, who are shown on green in green on the slide. City administration has initiated this work and is collaborating with our municipal partners, and I will now pass to Sarah to talk more about the infrastructure actions.
Thank you, Kim. As Kim noted, growth is creating opportunities but also pressures on our infrastructure. We are seeking both to maintain existing infrastructure as well as plan and deliver needed infrastructure in our growing communities. As we talk about a particular initiative on growth planning, I think it's important to note that for capital planning, we have to consider two big factors, asset management, the condition and renewal needs of existing infrastructure, as well as our levels of service and requirements for future infrastructure to meet community needs. There will be pressures to do both. Next slide. The Capital Infrastructure Plan Program is one of eleven strategies outlined earlier this year by administration to address the city's fiscal gap, uh specifically as it relates to our ability to maintain our inventory of aging infrastructure and build the new infrastructure required to meet the needs of our growing community. Next slide. The Capital Infrastructure Plan Program per in is intended to provide new coordinated oversight of infrastructure planning and service levels. CIPP will translate customer service levels objectives from existing public facing city plans and policies into tangible capital infrastructure service levels to identify gaps and overlaps in our infrastructure which are necessary to support city services. This will work will support budget planning and prioritization over a long term horizon to meet future population thresholds in alignment with the city plan. CIPP will operate as a partner to business areas, leveraging the city's asset management practices and processes, including the asset rationalization framework to enhance the integration of growth and regional planning. The intent of this work is to ve- develop city li- wide and district level infrastructure renewal and growth plans that will support a corporate understanding of project prioritization and support the upcoming capital budget and capital investment outlook. Infrastructure plans are developed by this program are internal facing, applying a district planning framework and their smaller geographic units to understand infrastructure needs informed by population change. The CIPP will help identify gaps in infrastructure, providing recommendations on how to meet infrastructure needs and monitoring to ensure that gaps don't return. Currently, growth and renewal priorities are identified through separate processes. A key function of CIPP will be to consider both renewal and growth needs, aligning priorities that best achieve city plan goals. Edmonton needs a robust transit network that connects to all areas of the city, providing Edmontonians with access to safe, convenient and reliable service. Edmonton's existing mass transit network is expanding to include not just LRT, but also new bus based tran- mass transit routes. Having more mass transit options will contribute to reaching the city plan target of fifty percent of all trips being made by transit or active transportation by twenty fifty. Building upon the Mass Transit Strategy twenty twenty four, planning is now underway for two new bus rapid transit BRT routes, B one route and B two route. The planning phase includes confirmation of alignment, how the BRT fits into available space, where stations are located, connections to active transportation network, access and other impacts, priorities and concept level costs. Having long term plans has and will continue to help Edmonton not only plan for our city needs, but be able to respond strategically when other levels of government have infrastructure funding available.
Approved in twenty seventeen, the Breathe Green Network Strategy fundamentally changed how Edmonton plans and manages its open spaces to serve a much larger future population. The implementation project updates older standards by shifting focus from treating parks as isolated sites to integrating them as a connected green network that serves broader city needs. The Breathe Implementation Project has three main objectives. To update the open space standards and retire the urban parks management plan that guides open space land acquisition, planning, development and management across all contexts, update and integrate open space data sets and develop an open space network analysis tool to ultimately inform and set priorities for open space for budget preparations. We continue to plan for growth and the city plan identifies the land south of forty first avenue as a future growth area for residential and non-residential development. To facilitate the timely and coordinated development of these lands, non-statutory pre-planning work is required, including conducting a high level servicing study and crust of growth analysis. Next slide, and one more. The total cost of ownership is another consideration of the complete lifecycle costs of capital assets owned by the city. Simplistically, this includes both capital and operating costs throughout the complete infrastructure lifecycle. We also have work happening on the fiscal impacts of growth. Having a stronger understanding of the fiscal impacts of growth will enhance the city's ability to understand the long term financial implications of larger discrete developments such as new neighborhoods and major redevelopments. Next slide. The city's revenue raising capacity persistently falls short of its expenditure needs, creating the fiscal gap, both for operating and capital costs. Edmonton is unique in approach to minimizing development charges and using cost sharing approaches such as the arterial roadway assessment. Council has moved towards development paying for growth infrastructure such as more recently fire halls and an increase to requirements to minimum park standards. The infill infrastructure fund is one of thirteen city initiatives funded by the Federal Housing Accelerator Fund and received thirty nine million dollars which addresses cost of public infrastructure upgrades that can be a barrier to infill development. Administration is exploring options to continue the program once the funding ends. And that concludes our presentation. I'll take any questions or comments. Thank you.
Right on time. We are at lunch and there is a uh event a number of us have to go to uh to do the construction season wrap up. So uh, what will happen is we'll do questions on this tomorrow morning. That'll be the first thing we do, uh, followed by the presentation on seven point four. So uh, until that's so right now we're on recess until tomorrow morning at nine thirty, noting that we have another meeting that we're coming back from recess on at one thirty. Again, just check your calendar. Thanks, everyone.